Order at 6:06 PM. We, um, who, do we have a member of the ministry here? Pastor Greg, if you could just do it first today. Um, we will be led in the pledge of allegiance by, uh, Councilwoman Fay Johnson.
Bow your heads if you would. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Uh, we're grateful for, um, just everything from our lives to the families you've given us, to the purpose and meaning in our lives, to work and friendships and all those things. What a lovely gift, um, Father God, to give to us as people. Uh, we do ask a blessing on the council tonight and on the conversations that they have and the decisions that they make. We also pray for the city, all the business people and the school kids and the teachers and all those who help make the city work well. We do pray for the, uh, the police department, Father, and the police chief, new police chief, and the fire department and the city works and parks and rec and everyone else. Father God, may you bless them. And thank you for the really lovely, quiet city that we have. It's, it's really something and we're grateful for it. So I ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Do we have any veterans in the house? If you could stand, please. We recognize our veterans before we do our pledge. Thank you for your service. If we could all stand and follow along with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. Republic for which stands one nation, without indivisible liberty and justice for all.
The roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Manning. Councilmember Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Protem Montero.
Present.
Mayor Vargas.
Here.
Okay. We have six presentations. Let's try to get through these, uh, efficiently. So that's why we have a 10-minute limit for presentations. So please be mindful, okay? Uh, but it's important information, uh, to have regardless. Uh, Robert Harris, deputy fire chief from the county of Los Angeles Fire Department. I invite you to come up to talk about the fire services contract, please, sir.
Well, good evening, Mayor Vargas and council member. As stated, my name is Robert Harris. I'm a deputy fire chief for Los Angeles County Fire Department, and I actually oversee the Central Region Bureau, which is the LA basin. Um, today, the district, uh, we're here to just talk about the fee structure. And the district and the city of, um, Hawthorne, we've shared a strong partnership for about 28 years, which the district deeply values. During this time, our firefighters have been proud to serve the community and its residents. Our goal has always been to maintain a high level of public safety and emergency response within the city. In July of 2023, the district notified the city that we were no longer able to continue the cost sharing, um, for fire and EMS services within the city limits. Since then, both parties have negotiated in good faith toward an agreement that would ensure fairness, fiscal responsibility, and full funding for the fire district. For fiscal year 2025 through 2026, the total cost for providing service to the city of Hawthorne is $15.4 million, with a disco- district cost share of 2.8 million. The district has proposed a three-year phased-in approach that will get us into full funding. This will result in year one fiscal year 2027, or 2026 through 27, the city would pay one-third, which was to be approximately $930,000, $930,000. Year two, which will be fiscal year 2027 through 28, the, the city would pay two-thirds more, which would be $1.86 million. And then fiscal year three, which would be, uh, 2028 through 29, the, the city would pay the full cost of the 2.8 million. This will be in addition to the ongoing COLA and incremental district overhead costs. The sis- the city currently operates approximately three fire stations, which breaks down to 12 post positions and one battalion chief daily. As part of our proposal, the district has off- also offered to fund one of two fire prevention inspectors, which are assigned to the city. This will result in approximately a $467,616 savings to the, to the city for fiscal year 2026 through 27. Our goal remains to be fully funded and to continue our far- our, our strong partnership with the city of Hawthorne and continue to be your fire department. This benefits not only your residents, the city, and our firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Uh, we appreciate your, the service that you have offered to the community of Hawthorne, and, uh, you guys go out there, put yourselves out, uh, for us. So just want to give him a round of applause and thank you. And the men on the ground, men and women on the ground, right, sir? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, awesome.
Up to the chair.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, sir, I had a question. Thank you.
Sorry.
Appreciate the, uh, the presentation and breaking down exactly the dollar amount. I was just curious, um, if there's a possibility, if we could have a regular report out from your fire station to the council? And I was also curious to know, like, say, for instance, you're here today presenting and giving us information, if we could make this like a regular thing? Doesn't have to be consistent, but just so that we're engaged in knowing exactly, uh, the services and what's happening in our city? More importantly, I think it's also good to know, just like our police department provides stats on, say, for instance, crime, et cetera, if there are some stats from the fire station, just let us know how many fires have been in the city, what has been going on with regards to fire station use. Um, I think it's just good, uh, partnership, just to report out and give general information. So if we could do that, I'd appreciate it.
More than happy to do that, and we can reach out to the city manager, um, and find out exactly, you know, what the needs are and the frequency, and we'd be more than happy to provide that at whatever interval you, you'd like.
Thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Fay Johnson, please. Item two.
If we could have the police chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, elected officials, and the city of Hawthorne. Uh, thank you for giving me a moment tonight to present a recognition the police department is doing to highlight some folks whose service is clearly appreciated and recognized by the city of Hawthorne. At the beginning of each city council meeting, it is commonplace for this entity to recognize those amongst us who have previously served in the armed forces of the United States. And as we all know, Veterans Day falls in the month of November. Recently, while scrolling through some social media posts, I came across a post from a California law enforcement agency showcasing some police uniform badges that were also adorned with the insignia of specific US military branches as a symbol to honor their military service. It immediately reminded me of this city council and the community's efforts to always acknowledge the military service of those amongst us. Seizing on that ideal, both captains and I immediately set forth to explore the process of obtaining similar badges for your police department staff members who are veterans. It got to the point where we worked out all the logistics, and then I sent out an email to all of our officers explaining how they could, if they were interested, order and pay for these badges themselves, should they be interested. Within 10 minutes of me hitting send on that email to all police department officers, I received a reply email from the Hawthorne Police Officers Association Board. Basically, the association board told me that they would assume responsibility for the cost of each badge for each of our military veterans. As a result, we were able to acknowledge the 12 military veterans amongst our sworn peace officer staff with a Hawthorne Police Department veteran badge. And as those badges are being circulated amongst you, you'll notice that the centerpiece is the specific, oh, I'm sorry, the specific insignia of each branch of military service. I passed around a generic Hawthorne police badge as well, so that you could see that normally that badge just has a state of California emblem in the center. For the month of November, these officers will be authorized to wear this uniform badge while on duty as a token of our gratitude for their military service. At the November meeting, we also hope to have several of those military veteran Hawthorne police officers here for formal recognition for their previous service to the country. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Chief.
Sir.
Um, so when are you going to be doing those presentations? Uh, of the other badges? When are you going to be doing that?
Um, so the officers will be authorized to wear those beginning November 1st and for the entire month of November, but, uh, at this first city council meeting in November, we hope to have them all here to, uh, stand in front of the council and be recognized.
Nice.
Sir, I, I just want to, I just want to remind everybody that, uh, the chief has served the city of Hawthorne so faithfully, we really appreciate his service. And, uh, as some of, some of you may know, um, he, he will not be returning because he's going to be going off and, uh, what, what, riding bikes and, and going to lakes, you know, and taking little road trips, the RV. I don't know, I'm just throwing that in there, just so many things.
All pretty accurate, sir.
Oh, really? So you're retiring. So we want to give him a big round of applause, and I have a... Sir, you've always been somebody that I could turn to, talk to, call in the morning, off hours, you know that, you know that, right? And you always call us back, very responsive, and you've kept us safe, so thank you so much. And, and because of that, we have a special proclamation signed by everyone here, including myself, all council member colleagues, and myself, a proclamation honoring Police Chief Gary Tomatani. Whereas Chief Gary Tomatani has faithfully and honorably served the city of Hawthorne for 31 years, demonstrating unwavering dedication, professionalism, and leadership in protecting and serving the community. Throughout his distinguished career, Chief Tomatani rose through the ranks of the Hawthorne Police Department with integrity, compassion, and a steadfast commitment to public safety. And whereas Chief Tomatani has been instrumental in advancing community policing efforts, building trust between officers and residents, and fostering a culture of respect, accountability, and service excellence within the department. And whereas, under his leadership, the Hawthorne Police Department has implemented innovative programs, enhanced, enhanced officer training, and strengthened partnerships with local schools, businesses, and civic organizations to promote a safer and more connected community. And Chief Tomatani's legacy is defined not only by his professional accomplishments, but also by his mentorship, his calm and steady guidance, and his genuine care for the community of Hawthorne. And upon his retirement, Chief Tomatani leaves behind an enduring mark of honor, dedication, and compassion that will continue to inspire those who follow in his footsteps. Now, therefore, the city of couns- the city council of the city of Hawthorne hereby recognizes and commends Chief Gary Tomatani for his exemplary 31 years of service, leadership, and devotion to the safety and well-being of our community, and extends its heartfelt gratitude and best wishes for a fulfilling and well-deserved retirement. Is, this is proclaimed this 28th day of October 2025, and as I said, signed by myself and my council colleagues. Let's give him another round of applause.
Yep.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Eve, you know that we go a long way, right? More than 25 years. Uh, when I met you for the first time, uh, you were a, um, a school ref- a resource officer, RSO we call them, right? Uh, so I saw you basically grow into what you became, a great chief for our Hawthorne Police Department. And it has been an honor, you know, working with you side to side. Uh, you have been a, a model, an example, what a police officer could be. Uh, and I know, you know, you came after great chief, but you have shown that you're the best chief, right? Like, uh, when you go to those, um, the chief war, chief war, you have been the, the roar, right? And, uh, and we know that you are Dodgers fans, and last night, that game was for you. Because they knew you were retiring, so they said, okay, so now you can go spend seven hours and watch that game, right? So, but I have to say, you have been outstanding to our city. And all our residents, constituents, myself, uh, you keep us safe, and the city, we have prospered, we have seen crime decrease. So you have, we have seen community policing, we have seen technology advance. So you have been an inspiration. So I know you're going to enjoy your retirement. I, I know you're going to go to those trips, right? And I'll see you on the road.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
To the chair. Thank you. Uh, chief, let me first of all acknowledge the presentation and thank also Councilmember Johnson. I think it's a great idea to have, uh, those badges with, uh, the service in which, um, our, our, our police officers have served. That's a great idea, thank you for that. Um, I also just want to commend you for all your efforts as chief, but more importantly, just your, your, your years of service, 31 years, is, is really something and something telling, right? Uh, I appreciate the ability to just, um, be able to be open with you and speak with you frankly on a number of matters. I like that you are truly engaged, especially wanting to find out, um, information whenever it's been, you know, asked of you. Um, I, I like that you have always, um, been able to, uh, provide all the information that we've asked for, but more importantly, just, just being yourself and, and, uh, being able, for me especially, to be able to, to be able to talk to you. So my years here on the council, I've seen chiefs come and go, and I could truly say that I have admired you, and I've been able to really speak with you one-on-one, which, um, again, is, is to be commended and just know the personality that you have. I, I would just want to wish you well. Uh, I know you'll enjoy your time, and, uh, I know that you're, you have lots of things that you're thinking about doing. Uh, we talked about some of those things, but tonight, uh, we hope that the Dodgers will, will, will prevail. Uh, I just wanted to say thank you and, um, for your leadership and also for your, your command, your commanders in leader, leadership. You truly are an officer and a gentleman, thank you so much.
Can you hear me? Okay. Um, thank you so much. I'm going to say diddle to everything everybody else said, but I just remember when I first started council, and one of the things that I wanted to do was go to every neighborhood association and introduce myself. Um, and you stepped right in and you helped me and you, uh, made it so that I could meet all of the community heads, um, of the associations and tell what my platform was, who I was, and what I planned to do. And I just remember us going to 360, and I was like, okay, thinking you were gonna, like, stand up and do this song and dance, and you're like, no, you, you have the floor. And I was like, wait, what? You're leaving me out here by myself? Um, but it was such a great experience, being able to go, I think we were doing like one a month or something. And it was just a great experience being with you. Um, you got there early, you waited on me, walked me in, I just felt like a real, real important person. You just made me feel warm, you welcomed me right away when I came to council, being a new council person. And you are always there eager to help me, um, to explain things to me when I didn't understand, make sure, when we did the homeless count, I was in the car with you, and it was just so great to be in the police car for the first time. I've always been afraid, but, um, you made it so that I wouldn't be afraid and, and was truly, truly welcoming, and I'm really going to miss that about you and that smile every time I see you. You might be cussing under your breath, but you're smiling in my face. And I appreciate that, that warm, happy, fuzzy, my teddy bear. I'm gonna miss you.
I'll miss you too. And if you knew my driving record, you would still be afraid if you were in the same car with me.
Thank you so much for your continued service and your hard work and your dedication and your patience and your great advice. Um, I have to say that I appreciate the way you lead your team and the way you carry yourself. Um, awesome, awesome, chief, and thank you so much for all that you've done, not only for me personally, but also for our city and our residents, and your leadership will continue to move forward in the next chief. Thank you.
To the chair. Thank you, chief, for all your service, and I, I know, like she was saying, a lot of times you don't say what you're really thinking, but I can read your mind right now. And you were saying, if you guys really appreciated me, you'd hurry this up so I could go watch my game, or let you go. Retire now. Um, but no, I appreciate you very much, I appreciate your mindset. Uh, you taught me a lot about the way, the way that you police in this city, unlike my military structure of where, you know, snatch them out of car, throw them on the ground. cuff them, hogtie them, put them in the back. And you're like, no, we, we don't do that, you know? And, and I appreciate that, that you guys are about saving lives. You guys are about de-escalation and, and it shows in the programs that you guys have developed under your leadership with the, having a physician on staff who's training our staff on how to treat as soon as they get on the scene and they're eager to treat. That our first resort here in our city is, is to de-escalate and treat people as human beings. I think it's setting the precedent for the entire South Bay and California as a whole, that you guys go against the grain of what a police officer is thought to be. And I really appreciate that. I appreciate you opening up my eyes on that. And thank you for your service very much so.
Thank you.
So thank you, Chief Tomatani. You know, I remember when I used to be on the motorcycle detail, that big old thing right there and like, I know who that is, you know? So I just, that's, I really remember you from that point forward because you were very visible. You know, we knew that, like, hey, you better not mess around, be careful how you drive. You know, Tomatani's on, on the road right now. But your demeanor is, allows for people to trust, to be able to approach you, to be able to ask you, to be able to share, you know, what our thoughts are. And you took that information and was able to, you know, sometimes mold your own, you know, your approach, but also to give us a proper response, to reframe things, to allow us to look at things slightly different. Okay? Because sometimes we would come, at least I would go in saying, hey, we need to do this, we need to do that. You gave me the other side of the token, of the, of the token, right? Of the coin. And your policing actually is in alignment with a lot of the way I think. It's about giving people chances, have a bit, having a bit of compassion, but keeping people safe at the same time. So, and I'm anti-recidivism, I work in the jails. And so I really appreciate you letting me see that, you know, that there's good ways of doing things, ways that I didn't think so. So we're safe, we're a great community and the police department wouldn't be here in this position if it wasn't for you. So thank you so much. Let's give him a round of applause, folks. Do we have the ability to take pictures because we have this and Eric's there, so if we could join us? Well. Are, are we good? He was able to say anything?
If I can just make one quick comment.
Yes.
And this is very, very important.
That's we need you.
Over the course of a thirty-one year career in, in this profession, there are ample opportunities to, you could legitimately serve thirty-one years of service and do seven different jobs for four and a half years each. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a pretty easy possibility. And over the course of the three years that I've had the opportunity to serve as this city's chief of police, Mr. Norris, thank you very much for your confidence in me and allowing me to have this opportunity. To the council and to the community, thank you for really the unwavering support. There have been some rough patches along the way and I've never once gone home at the end of a shift and felt like that the vast majority of this Hawthorne community hasn't been stood behind its police department. Public safety is a high priority here. But what makes it easy and what makes thirty-one years go by in a flash are the people across the board, our elected officials. It can't be easy to dictate policy for the city. Our professional staff members, the fellow, my fellow department heads over there. None of the successes that have occurred at the police department, I would be willing to guess, long before I became the chief, are done in a vacuum with the police department succeeding on its own. It requires a team effort and without my counterparts over there in the bullpen, it really would, would not, we wouldn't be nowhere here. And then there's two very, very important gentlemen in uniform in this room right now, both captains. You know, for the three years, I've been able to focus on ideals and concepts because they've been running the police department on a day-to-day basis. So when it comes to the public safety in this community, it comes from them. So for the past thirty-one years, regardless of what my role has been, thank everybody in this room for all of your constant unwavering support.
Thanks, Eric.
Let's give the chief another round of applause. Wonderful. Councilman Taro, you have another presentation. Number three, please. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight I want to welcome Jackie, Jake and Ann. Because you know how we've been talking about our city being one of the most dense, populated city? And also traffic has been a congestion and, and nightmare for us in the city of Hawthorne. You know, a lot of cars in our streets. And then since about a few months ago, we were talking about e-bike. So South Bay Cog, you know, as we are part of the South Bay, is about sixteen cities. So tonight they're gonna present to us the micro mobility, the missing mode in transportation. So to give you just a highlight, so, because I think we need it in our city. So Jackie, take over.
Thank you very much and thank you for inviting us, mayor and council member. You gave us an incredibly hard act to follow. So we're gonna change the tone here a little bit, but I'd like to introduce Jake Romoff and Ann Tsai, who are our, our very great transportation teams. So I'll let them give the presentation and then we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Let me say that Jack is the executive director of the South Bay Cog, so welcome.
Will the presentation be?
Behind you.
There's nothing displayed on here.
Oh, is it this one? Yeah.
Yes. There you go. Is the presentation out or is this what we should have on? The PDF?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that'll do it.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, mayor and council members. We're here tonight to discuss micro mobility as the missing mode in transportation and how it is important to our transportation system in the South Bay.
So the main, the main things we want to discuss today is not only, yes, that missing mode of transportation, but also the hot topic of micro mobility when specifically talking about e-bikes, which is safety and how we can promote safety within our communities while promoting this mode of transportation. So a little known fact, but last year, the third highest selling electric vehicle, cars included, was actually an e-bike. And in this coming year, it's projected that e-bikes are actually going to outperform electric cars in total in terms of sales. So this e-bike explosion is really coming off of COVID and it's not going anywhere very soon. And our cities, our communities are faced with catching up, whether it is from safety protocols, from regulation, from ordinances. And so our goal as the South Bay City Council of Government is to promote this mode, micro mobility of all types, but to promote its safe uses. Because we view this as a mode that is applicable to all members of the communities, from middle schoolers to senior citizens. And the reputation that comes with this mode due to some unsafe operations and a lack of sometimes education in this space, we think that is really hindering the public perception of this mode and preventing further adoption. So we really want to help support you, the cities, the communities, with getting ahead of the problem because it would save lives, same time and save money.
So let's talk about some of the immediate actions that other cities, your neighboring cities, have implemented to address this growing e-bike popularity and some of the good and some of the bad that comes with it. I've got e-bike sticker programs at schools, city ordinances and also increased law enforcement when it comes to e-bikes. I'm gonna expand upon what e-bike sticker programs are. So, oh, enter. There we go. In several school districts around the South Bay, schools have started to implement something called an e-bike sticker program. And what that is, is that when there's like a large volume of students riding e-bikes, e-scooters into school, they're noticing a lot of unsafe riding behavior going to and from schools. So schools have stepped in and partnered with local e-bike safety educators as well as law enforcement to implement these programs that require students to take a safety course, an education course on what are the rules of the road in order to earn a sticker that they then place on their bikes and then are then eligible to ride into school. So school administrators are in those bike corrals where all the students are parking their vehicles and checking to see that these students have earned their sticker. And these programs have really started to pop up and, and become popular. Hermosa Beach was the very first school district to implement, followed by many of the beach cities and now on the peninsula. In addition, I have some examples of cities that have passed e-bike ordinances. So for example, Manhattan Beach and Hermosa Beach, at their city council level, they've adopted ordinances to really mitigate unsafe riding behavior and to prevent e-bikes from riding in places that really are for pedestrians and are not safe for, for people on these electric vehicles that are going above twenty miles an hour.
So at this point, we want to transition to, we all know the safety concerns around it, but the opportunity that micro mobility represents for the community and for the region. So the South Bay has done extensive studies on transportation in the subregion. And one of our key findings was that about a hundred and thirty thousand trips taken in cars within the South Bay are less than half a mile. So these are internal combustion engine, heavy vehicles, high collision impact vehicles, just to go less than a mile about a few blocks. Additionally, transportation is the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in the South Bay. And not only is that stat about the hundred thirty thousand cars less than half a mile, but seventy percent of all trips in the South Bay in total are less than three miles. So most of our trips tend to be local, if not even hyper-local to our area. So what we were thinking when we saw this is asking ourselves, why are we using these big cars, these trucks, these high-impact vehicles to just get down the street, to just go to the gas station or to the grocery store? So what we came up with. Oh.
Yeah. So we, we really see micro mobility as addressing some of those gaps and also being able to capture most of those local trips. So when we're talking about micro mobility here with the South Bay Cog, we're referring to not only pedal bikes, your traditional bicycles, e-bikes, e-scooters, but also neighborhood electric vehicles or like the street legal golf carts and any of those in-between novel modes like the ones pictured in the slide. And so as Jake has already explained, that these have been growing in popularity and they can satisfy most of the local trips. If people are going three miles, you don't really need a full-size car to accomplish that trip. And these vehicles are very customizable and so they offer a lot of utility. If you've seen a cargo bike before, it has a ton of storage space for you to carry your groceries or to transport your child as you're taking them to school. They offer door-to-door on-demand and can even act as a complement to transit for that first last mile connection. They're relatively low cost, low maintenance cost. Fueling is very negligible. You don't really see a difference in your electricity bill. They plug right into your wall outlet. There's a variety of modes for all ages and abilities. Jackie likes to say that micro mobility can be your first car and your last car for your teenager getting to school and also for your senior citizen who may or may not be able to drive anymore. But they're adaptable for, for all ages and abilities. And most of all, they're really fun to ride and that's probably why so many young people have taken up on them.
So now how do we promote micro mobility, but more importantly, how do we promote safe micro mobility? So this is a map of Hawthorne and all these green streets are streets that are already under twenty-five miles per hour. They're slow-speed streets. And so when we look at this, what we take away from it is micro mobility shouldn't be sharing the road with those high-speed cars. An e-bike with a student getting to school shouldn't be on a forty-five mile per hour street with a bunch of cars. It's asking for collisions, it's asking for putting themselves in danger. And so the real issue that we face is if we want these e-bike riders to stay in these slow-speed streets, how do they get across those high-speed arterials to get from slow-speed zones, what we're calling turtle zones, to other slow-speed zones? And this formed the foundation of a project we work on at the cog called the Local Travel Network. It's been implemented in a couple of cities and it's really a project that promotes micro mobility and safe use of micro mobility, separating it from those high-speed streets. And so now this is a map, same map of Hawthorne where those zones have been identified. You can see them in green and those white bolded lines are those high-speed intersections. And so the approach that we take is helping facilitate crossings, protected crossings, either at four-way stops or lights across those high-speed arterials from zone to zone. So it takes the e-bikes off the busy cities, there's less collisions with cars and it protects riders and the community. And we've been doing this with other cities through Measure M funds. So it's a state sales tax, so it's at no cost to you or your city. And it's funded through Metro that we help put together applications and facilitate those projects.
I want to clarify that Measure M is a LA County local sales tax. Yes. So we understand that micro mobility creates a very big opportunity to encourage people to use micro mobility to what we call right-size your ride for your short trips. And we see this offering many benefits to the residents of the South Bay, reducing congestion by encouraging this adoption of, of these micro mobility vehicles, taking those, those vehicles off of major streets, diverting them onto low-speed streets, promotes energy efficiency once again. They're very low, low costs, low, low energy requirements to power these devices, but they have incredible range for many local trips. For households, this can reduce travel costs. A nice byproduct is that we reduce our carbon emissions by converting to zero emission vehicles. And there are hundreds of thousands of extra household vehicles in the South Bay. So we're not asking you to replace your car. I know that's unpopular. I know that's unpopular. But when you're considering your third or fourth or fifth car, that's not very necessary, in our view. So, micromobility can serve that purpose. And in addition, from a city perspective, if you have parking demand issues, these micromobility vehicles are much smaller. They're very compact, so they don't require much space to park them. And so, this presents an opportunity to address parking demand.
And more so on the parking with rena allocations coming down and cities struggling to meet that. We're expecting an infill of more people, more cars, more demand on our infrastructure and our parking especially. And these lower-profile, smaller vehicles offer a potential solution or potential opportunity to address that challenge that we're all going to face. So, thank you very much for inviting us to come present. And if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you.
One question. Not right now.
Thank you, Jake, and thank you, Jackie, for bringing... Because the reason that I brought you guys here is because, you know, Hawthorne, we are a very congested city. We see cars and cars. So, especially during the traffic hours, right? It's impossible to go on El Segundo or 120 or Rose Grant. It's bumper-to-bumper. It's almost like unbelievable because people try to get out of the freeway. And then, you've got our residents, right? Our residents, like I said, it goes half a mile from there, two blocks. They drive to this grocery store, or they even go to church. They drive like one block just to go to church. So, we're trying to figure out a way to minimize, you know, all these congestions. And Jake said, the rena numbers. Now, people can build a park with no parking garage or nothing. So, we're going to have more cars on our streets, and then it's how to alleviate that. And we've been dealing with parking issues almost every city council meeting for the past, I don't know, 10 years, about not enough parking, not enough parking. So, that is what I wanted my colleagues to digest this micromobility because I think it's a solution that we have right in front of us, and we need to implement it.
To the chair. Thank you. Let me just, first of all, thank you, Jackie, for being here, and thank you, Annie and Jake, for your presentation. I appreciate that. I know the mayor has been talking about here lately educating our community when it comes to bikes, when it comes to e-bikes, when it comes to scooters. I mean, it's really an uptick with all of these, you know, two-wheelers. And so, it's an educational component, I think, just like anything is when you're looking at just all of the spectrum of, you know, the good, the bad, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Our city is growing. We're just fairly trying to figure out our parking situation and making assessments and, you know, feasibility studies, et cetera, on the things that we might need to implement, might not need to implement. We have a great group of volunteers from our community that is helping in the planning phases, if you will, of our specific plan, which is good because that's community input. So, I would highly also recommend an educational component when delivering on, say, for instance, the possibilities of what this looks like for any given city, including ours. But at the end of the day, you know, it's something that we need to look at, just like any other cities, and think out of the box. And as we grow, I think we'd probably have to head that way. But thank you again for your presentation and making efforts to deliver what's obvious, you know, the good on another transportation choice. Thank you.
To the chair. Thank you so much, Jackie, and for bringing your team out to share with us. I know the police department, they were... We've been looking at programs to implement, so this definitely sparked some more ideas. So, we appreciate this. It's sorely needed in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie, and your team for researching this and thinking about it. Obviously, maybe this started because there was a certain concern in our community from portions of our community where they felt that the e-bikes were kind of being driven around recklessly by the youth. And so, I think that's the way we started talking about it. But now that a council member, Mayor Protem Montero, brought it up as a solution, I think we can maybe change our perspective on this and see how it could work. With... It has to be put to the test, okay? Because one thing is sitting down, I don't know how many people you had working on this, or in a prototype-type of setting, and then actually putting it to work, okay? And testing it out and making adjustments, et cetera. So, I think with a careful, slow approach, we could probably start implementing certain things.
Great, thank you. We are working in El Segundo, and it is, the turtle signs are on the street, but we're working in several other communities. We'd love to work with you, and our team is available to give you suggestions for educational programs as well.
Thank you, Jackie, for coming. I really do appreciate the presentation. And it was really news to find out the uptick in sales in e-bikes. Had no idea, but I guess, when you think about the youth and the way they get around, especially when, you know, they don't have transportation or they're not driving, but they still need to get somewhere, and their parents are unwilling to take them. These are great options for them to be able to get to their destination. And when you talk about the Olympics, or not just the Olympics, but you talk about the congestion that we have in our city by being next door to the city of Inglewood. There's so much congestion during that time. My daughter works at SoFi, and I actually went there, and it took me an hour and a half to get there. But I only live seven minutes away. So, when you talk about, "I wish I could have had an e-bike" or something, that picture you showed with the buggy on the back, I wish I could have had something like that to maneuver through that traffic. But, you know, when you talk about congestion, we definitely need other ways and other means in our city to be able to get throughout our city, especially when we have all these activities. And I think we're going to be having activities for the next three years or so. Each year, it's going to, you know, compile, compile, compile. And us thinking about now, how we're going to deal with that issue when we already are trying to deal with the parking, but now we've got to deal with that as well. So, this is a great start, and I appreciate those numbers. It really makes a difference. And these are options that we can, you know, use in our city. So, I'm excited to work with your team. You guys did an excellent job, good job. I believe you're an intern, right? Last year?
Not anymore.
Okay. Yeah, I remember when he came aboard. So, you guys did a very good job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And they have done outstanding job, you know, El Segundo. Now, Londale is involved, right, and Carson? Because now they're going to be driving from the, almost from the Carson to the sea. Yeah, so there is like some projects, whatever it is, in works that actually show that it works.
And we are doing ride-and-drive events that we'll have next spring, where we can invite your community coming and actually see these vehicles and try them.
Thank you very much.
Will they be free? Test rides are free.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Angie Reyes English, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to bring up New Star Family Justice Center. The director, is she here? There she is. I just want to acknowledge the month of domestic violence awareness and just bring this proclamation to you. And if I could read it real quickly. "City of Hawthorne, a proclamation, New Star Family Justice Center, whereas domestic violence remains a critical issue that impacts individuals, families, and communities across all backgrounds, causing lasting harm to victims and future generations. And whereas New Star Family Justice Center has demonstrated unwavering dedication to supporting survivors of domestic violence through advocacy, crisis intervention, counseling, and legal assistance. And whereas through education, prevention initiatives, and survival survivor..." I can't read this. "...centered programs, New Star Family Justice Center continues to raise awareness, empower families, and foster hope for a future free from violence and free. And whereas their tireless efforts serve as an inspiring example of community commitment and compassion, transforming lives and strengthening the foundation of justice and equality for all. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed that we recognize and commend New Star Family Justice Center for their exceptional service, leadership, and dedication to ending domestic violence and supporting survivors on their journey to safety and empowerment. Presented this day, the 28th day of October 2025." Thank you so much for your dedication. Would you like to say a few words?
I would like to say, on behalf of the New Star Family Justice Center and all the families that we serve, we want to thank you for recognizing this very important issue. Our survivors and families that come to our center are... They need all the support that they can. This is very important for them. And I want to thank all of you for the partnership in hope and healing for our community.
Thank you so much. Does anyone else would like to say some words?
Yeah, to the chair. So, I think you guys had an event this Saturday, and I had a chance to come by. And you had a nice crowd, and you guys did a really good job. I just want to say, I truly appreciate your organization and what it does for people. I am known, a lot of women that have experienced domestic violence. And one in particular that touched my heart is the fact that women with kids, when they're in a situation and they have nowhere to go, no support, and they're trying to just figure out how to survive. And knowing that an organization like yours is standing up for them and supporting them and providing resources for them, it means a lot to them. When you are going through something and you don't have anybody that you can trust and you can count on to help you get through those hard times, and to know that your organization is giving out love for free. Nobody gives anything these days for free. And so, I am so happy that our partnership supports your organization. And I just say, keep doing the work. Thank you so much because it means the world to the folks that you're helping, again, women and children, you know? So, thank you so much, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. The work you're doing is really freaking amazing. So, thank you.
I want to recognize you and commend you also for the volunteerism, for putting these programs together to help women across the board in different situations. I work in a jail, and my student body that I teach, the ladies that I'm teaching right now are... Well, they're females. They're, you know, the violations or the, you know, whatever they've been accused of, they could range for a lot of different things. But one of the most common themes there is domestic violence. And so, domestic violence, you know, makes them dependent, has made them dependent on others. And those people have led them astray or misled them and caused a different, you know, them to turn to substance abuse to make bad decisions in their life, and so many different things, the whole gamut of things. And just the trauma, the emotional trauma that they've experienced. So, having you out here, so when they're released, you know, because at this point is when they're released and they have a resource out in the community to help them navigate through everything once they're out, is, you know, very important. So, I really think that what you do is... Personally, I think that it's very momentous. It's grand, what you do to help protect these ladies and their families.
Thank you so much.
To the chair.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilwoman English, for bringing this up. I grew up in a domestic violence situation. That's how I ended up in foster care. So, to have this, back in my day, we didn't have support systems. Women were on their own, and more than likely, they stayed in the bad situation. And if nobody cared enough to get the children out of it, they were raised in it too. So, I appreciate your service and what you do for our community because it's very necessary for people to understand that they do have support. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
To the chair, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Malone, for your decades of service in our city and for all the partnership that you have provided, even to the Hawthorne School District, working with those middle-school kids, mentoring them, and even to give a safe space to the women to come in, to file, like I was saying in order, right? To guide them to the right path to get out of those situations. So, you have been an angel to our city. And again, I want to thank Councilwoman English because every year, we recognize the domestic violence in October. But it should be every day recognized, domestic violence, because we know it happens more often that we could not stop. But thanks to you, you have given women hope and have drive them to a better place. And for that, you have gained a star among us. Thank you very much.
Thank you again so very much.
Council colleagues, if you could join me here in the center? If you could come to the center so we could take a photo? Thank you.
Councilmember Reyes English, you have a second item?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I have the honor of recognizing a great man here in the city of Hawthorne. And just watching him and everything that he does, from photography to journalism to just community service, you know, I just want to recognize him. And so, I ask Ricky Richardson to please come up to the podium, please. Good to see you, yes.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Boy, I think you're everywhere. But let me just say, on behalf of the city of Hawthorne, we recognize Ricky Richardson. In recognition of your exceptional support and dedicated service to our community, your selfless contributions, compassion, and unwavering commitment to helping others have made a lasting and meaningful difference. Your actions embody the true spirit of community, and we extend our deepest gratitude for the positive impact you continue to make. Recognize this 28th day of October 2025, and to your photography and journalism is to be commended. So, I want to give you this certificate. If there's anyone else that'd like to say a few words on behalf of Ricky?
Absolutely, 1,000%. I'm so jealous that you beat me to it. This man is amazing. I appreciate you because you keep me updated on what's going on. I love that you, on your own time, make sure you're either emailing us or you are dropping off papers to let us know not only what's going on in our community, but what's going on in other communities. And you stay on top of us. You let us know, hey, this is going on in this community. Are you guys aware of this? And so, I really, truly appreciate because sometimes, I'm not aware. I can't be every place at one time. And so, some things that I don't know. And I just, I truly appreciate you, and you are such a hard-working man. You are everywhere. You sure you don't have a twin? Because you truly show up for our city. You are here all the time. But not only here, I see you everywhere else too. So, I think you really do have a twin. But thank you so much for always being there to support our community and to support me, letting me know what's going on. Thank you so much.
To the chair, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ricky. And also, thank you for your service because I see that army jacket over there. And also thank you for your service, because I see that Army jacket over there. But like Ms. Manning said, you know, you almost like is the eye behind us, right? Because when you go and took pictures and then you cut them and bring to us, just for our memories to keep with that, so that is tremendous. Because I, you know, I don't know, it's been almost like 15 years. You can, every year that I put an event together, you bring me pictures. Okay, so it's a tremendous effort, you know, you don't ask for nothing. You do it out of your own heart, and that is tremendous command to you because you do it for the love of it. And your journalism and your photography is so beautiful because I have, you know, envelopes of my own pictures taken by you. So one day, I'm going to make a book, and I'll definitely put your name in there, okay?
Hopefully, I get my commission also.
So again, thank you from the bottom of my heart because, you know, it's like we have our own private photographers, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
To the chair. Thank you for your service. I'm too a veteran, so I appreciate what you do. I'm Air Force, though, so I know you guys say we're the chair force, but we do appreciate the Army very much so. And so now I know where the pictures are coming from. I have these pictures on my desk, and I'm like, who's cutting this out and putting it on my desk? I have no idea. Now I know. So thank you very much. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Ricky, thank you so much, man, for everything you do. And like, I echo what Councilwoman Manning said. You're everywhere, man. I bump into you in other cities. Didn't I bump into you at El Camino? Yeah, I bumped into you at El Camino.
At a summer, when you was teaching a summer class.
Yeah, I was like, what are you doing here? What are you doing? Hey, all that, you know? So, I mean, you're all over the place. So just thank you for volunteering your time, for doing what you do. Your interest, obviously, is not just a hobby, it's you're actually interested in the community and the things that go on, because you know how to pick these events. You know how to be where you want to be, we need to be. So thank you for sharing. Hey, man, I want to start getting some of those pictures too, okay? So sign me up if you got any, have any that I think, that you think I should have, okay?
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and the City Council for your acknowledgement.
Ricky, just real quick, thank you for the package you left on my desk for Hispanic Heritage Month. I love it, especially the little purse from Mexico. Gracias. Thank you so much. But there's one other little thing that I want to give you that you're so worthy because you're such a good person. You're so sweet. You really are. Vaughn, can you help me? Come on to the center here. If we could go take a picture?
Councilwoman Katrina Manning, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to take this time to call up the folks from Sports Basement. They're going to do a presentation. So I have been blessed with the opportunity to bring this great, wonderful company to the city of Hawthorne. We have had Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. It's been empty for about three years. And I had an opportunity to be introduced to their organization, and they talked about the importance of wanting to come to the city of Hawthorne. And so I'm going to let them tell you who they are and why they're here. Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much for including us on your agenda tonight. Really, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Potem, especially Councilwoman Manning. I feel like you've been a huge advocate for us, bringing our store to your town. We are very, very grateful. We're a small business, even though this is our 15th location. We're growing in California. We are really working on being local and present in our communities. And your home is a perfect fit for us. So, yeah, we just wanted to take a few minutes to introduce us, ourselves. I'm Kristin. I am with the SoCal Marketing Team, and this is Ryan. Yeah, we are going to move on. Sorry, I'm not good at this stuff.
That's okay.
Space.
Space.
Nope.
How do you move it forward?
There we go. Arrow.
Okay. Yeah, so hello. Hello, everybody. Again, my name is Ryan. I'm the South Bay marketer for the South Bay store specifically. And so we're just going to go over a bunch of things, what we're all about, our iconic locations. We're going to talk about some of the numbers and then looking forward at the South Bay store specifically.
South Bay store or the Hawthorne store? Which one is it? Oh, okay, just wanted to check.
It's Hawthorne, South Bay. Yeah, Hawthorne. So we're redefining the role of retail in our community. And our goal has been to just, to be just, not just be a store, but encourage people to do stuff, not buy stuff. So we are a sports retail store, and we sell everything you could think of. Manning was there, and you can truly tell that we have everything you need. It could be bikes, it can be snowboards, skis, camping. We also do a bunch of team sports stuff, so.
Yeah, and by doing stuff, we really mean doing stuff in our community. We focus on a virtuous circle. We really firmly believe that a business can't be successful in the community unless it's feeding back to the immediate community. So our focus is fundraising for our community partners, partnering with schools and nonprofits in our local community, employing people locally, and then, of course, outfitting everyone in the fun gear that we all love to wear. So giving back is really integral to what we do in our store. We have a nice home base that we started in San Francisco 28 years ago. And as we've grown and added new locations, each one of our locations has really focused on accessibility and affordability. We do that in a couple different ways. Most importantly is our basement tier partnership with each member. So kind of, I don't want to say REI, but REI has memberships, so do we. But what's cool is if somebody joins it, then they get 10% off for life. So we're trying to create opportunities for people to be able to afford an e-bike for their kids to go to school, afford camping gear if you're a scout, running shoes for your first marathon, whatever it is, we want to make sure that it's accessible, you have the resources, and the amazing staff to help you find the right gear. The other thing that we work on with accessibility is our education programs. We have clinics that we offer in-store. So these are things that are not on our calendar yet here in Hawthorne, but we anticipate rolling them out hopefully in the early start of the new year. We do backpacking clinics, hiking clinics. We have a wonderful partnership with Sierra Club Wilderness Travel Course. And sometimes they'll come to our stores and they'll teach a real simple class, like where to hike in L.A. because the fires burnt out so many of our favorite trails. So that's a really simple, very popular experience. We do bike trainings, we do run clubs, we have yoga classes. So, and all these are free to the community. So that's a key component of what we try to offer. The other part of our basement tier membership program is giving back to the community. So it's awesome. Everybody's stoked to get 10% off for life, right? You always want a discount. Everybody's looking for a deal. But what we require, when you sign up to become a member, is you actually have to pick a nonprofit. So all of our Southern California nonprofits are on a master list. When you walk into our store, you join our membership, and you can pick a school down the street. You can pick New Hope Family Justice Center as an example. Michael's Learning Center just signed up. They're around the corner. They signed up today, I think. So it's great to allow people to use their shopping dollars to give back to a local nonprofit. And so that's one of the things that we try to really magnify and support is giving these local partners resources that, you know, it's not huge fundraising dollars, but it's great. It's an easy way to give back. Ryan is the key component of what our Hawthorne store does for marketing. So he does all of the direct outreach for all the teams. So I'll let him speak a little bit more to some of the new partners that we have signed up.
Yeah, so currently, what I do is I do some outreach, and I'm looking for nonprofits that are willing to participate. And it could be anybody. There's no cost for any of these nonprofits to participate. And like Kristin was saying, we do have the basement tier program. And we just want to invite them to come in the store as a way to fundraise for their nonprofit as well. And some of those is, like Hawthorne Schools, we have Della Elementary who's already signed up. We're working with Wiseburn Little League already, doing some sports stuff because we sell baseball, we have cleats, we have soccer balls, we have catcher's mitts, anything that you can think of. We also are working with the Boys and Girls Club of Carson, who is kind of the Boys and Girls Club for this Southern South Bay area, and some other Boys and Girls Clubs as well. And they're actually going to be the highlighted nonprofit for our grand opening, which is going to be on November 22nd. And so anyone who signs up and they don't know which nonprofit they want to choose can always choose the Boys and Girls Club because, you know, we just, we want to give back to our community. And that's kind of the whole reason why we do what we do, is to just be the face of the community and give back. So, yeah, just working on trying to get 100%, that's my goal, 100% of the schools in this program so that we can have events with them and give them a free community space to be able to come and host their events as well as be able to kind of give back to them at the same time.
Oh, and going back to that last slide real quick. So this slide is out of date. Since we've opened, we have given $12 million back to schools and nonprofits throughout California, which is great. So it is really impactful. And it's great to know that your dollars are going back to the nonprofit that you choose that could be right down the street. It could be the school your kids went to. So we're really, really proud of that.
And, yeah, so we, like I said, we have community event space in our store. We have, I think it's 10 chairs, 50 tables. We're getting like cocktail tables so you can stand. You can host any type of event that you would like there. But we have a TV. You can do presentations, you can do team meetings, you can do birthday parties there. It's really an open canvas for anybody. Like I said, you don't have to be a member. You don't have to, you know, do anything. You just go on our website and you can book this free community space. And then, like this slide says, we host 5,000 community events a year. That's kind of up to 13 events, and that's through all of our stores, not just one store because that would be kind of crazy. But, yeah, we host a lot of events, and like we said, we're just, we really are here for the community. Oh, some of the events that we host, we do run clubs, we do yoga classes, so wellness sessions. Like Kristin was saying, we do some of the other classes with some of our nature groups and stuff like that. We do PTA meetings, so that's another thing. That's how we work with some of our schools because they're in the 501(c)(3) nonprofits. We do coaches meetings, we do art classes, fundraisers. We've done pet adoptions, and we've even done drag shows. So like, that just shows you everything that we can do in the scope of our community space.
Yeah, so what's special about our team? Key things, over 60% of our staff in Hawthorne is local to Hawthorne and Redondo, which is great. We have some key players like myself and Ryan that happen to live in Orange County, but we're very excited to come up and be a part of the growth of our company and expand into this new vibrant community. We have specialist people in each department. So if you go and get a new pair of Hoka's, you will be able to talk to the guy that came in third place at the Long Beach Marathon this last year. He is our shoe lead. If you go and talk to somebody about snowboards, you're going to get someone that spends, well, probably more time than they should on the mountain when we really want them working. So you have really qualified people working in these great departments that can give you instructions and are willing to talk for hours about their favorite topics and help educate everybody. So our new store employs 39 people currently, as of today. And we're just really fortunate to have such a local... We were really thrilled with the response when we put out our hiring signs that so many people in the immediate community were familiar with us and excited to join our team. So we're really fortunate. The next couple slides, you know, we're preaching to the choir here. We are not trying to convince you to bring us to your city at this point. We are grateful that you have already chosen to do that. These just kind of highlight some of the other cool locations that we've had. You know, Councilwoman Manning mentioned the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. We do like to move into old buildings. So in Berkeley, we're in an old ice skating rink. In the Procedio in San Francisco, we're actually in the Old Commissary that is on the Procedio Base. Redwood City was like, oh, it was a really sad shopping center, right near a freeway. And we were able to help revitalize it. In Long Beach, in Stone Town, we took over some pretty old mall spaces. And then Long Beach, of course, is the old Sears. So we're stoked to be in Hawthorne, this new location. If you haven't had a chance to come by and see it, it's a lot of fun. We get to ride escalators. Usually in sports basements, we don't have any escalators because we firmly believe in being, you know, using your body, using the stairs, being active. But we kept escalators this time, which is great. So the last couple things, we are proud to be the largest ski and snowboard retailer in California. Rental centers, that's one of the other things that we do to keep accessibility. Key for the public is we, you can rent gear. If you can't afford to buy it, that's totally okay. You can rent it for two days. If you don't want to buy it, even if you can afford it, because you don't have a place to store it. A lot of college kids come to us and utilize our rental programs. And at this point, we're the only camping rental provider in Orange County, Riverside, and L.A. counties, which is really cool. So if anyone needs camping gear, we have a lot of it. So, yeah, we're fortunate that our community outreach approach has enabled us to continue being successful as a for-profit business. And we've allowed for growth and expansion, which is, we're really grateful for that. Yeah.
To the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you just mention, did you give this out real quick?
Absolutely. That is the next slide. And we have, so, yes, if you weren't aware, we opened just this last Thursday. We signed our lease on September 5th, and we opened on the 23rd of this month. So this was our fastest opening ever. We are really, that's the key reason we're here tonight, is to say thank you to the council for helping us expedite and enable and smooth things out for us. We're incredibly grateful. So the big grand opening party, which is on your desk, we're very, very excited about that. That is on November 22nd. And I'll let Ryan finish up with the details on that.
Yeah, so like she said, November 22nd, big day. Everybody should be there because it's going to be a nice event. It is our snow opening, so we're calling it our grand opening and our snow fest. So from Northern California all the way down to Orange County, we do snowfests. And it's kind of the launch of our snow season, whether that's, you know, snow jackets, snow pants, snowboards, skis, boots. Literally, everything that you can name that has to do with snow is what we're highlighting that day. But like I mentioned earlier, we're also highlighting the Boys and Girls Club. So that day, people who sign up to become basement tiers are going to be asked to preferably choose the Boys and Girls Club. And when you go in, you're actually going to be able to donate and receive a tasting cup of beer from a local brewery, L.A. Ale Works. So we're also working with them. And then we are also working with... And then we are also working with a fantastic DJ named DJ Gigi, who was given to us by Councilwoman Katrina Manning, and we're really excited to have her. So she's going to be spinning the deck all day. We're going to have music, we're going to have close to 40 or 50 vendors from some of the top ski brands that are also going to be doing giveaways all day. We have door prizes, raffles. Like I said, it's going to be a huge day. It's going to be a party and it's going to be fun.
And a ribbon cutting, which hopefully your names are all on the list.
Yeah. So we'll be having a ribbon cutting. And to top it off, this is all free to attend. There is no price to join, there's no price to go. So you can come check us out for free. And yeah, there was also one thing I wanted to mention that our store being built in the short amount of time was built by the hands of every single employee there. So when we hire, we hire them on and they worked every single day for hours building all the fixtures, building everything that you can think about that's in the store. So that just goes to show that everyone who's working there has their heart and soul into like the fixture that your shirt is on, the rack that, you know, holds your snowboards and stuff like that. So I thought that was really important.
Thank you so much. To the chair. I just wanted to mention this. So their grand opening is November 22nd at 9:00 AM. And the address, I don't have the address.
14351 Hendry.
Thank you.
Right by Costco.
Yeah.
To the chair. I thank you, Ms. Manning, for bringing the sport basement and welcome to the City of Hawthorne.
Thank you.
And one of the probably foundation that you should look into is the Hawthorne Education Foundation, that we have 11 school in our east of Hawthorne Boulevard. So I'd be delighted if you can contact Dr. Brian Mercarien from the Hawthorne School District because they have a foundation. And I was going to ask, are you going to bring snow on the 22nd? Because, you know, Mattel used to bring snow to the, one of the elementary school every year. So, and then they stopped to do that. So it would be nice if we would have some snow at the store.
We'll add it to the list. We'll see.
So yeah, so just look into Hawthorne because, you know, like I said, you know, we have some great nonprofits like the Richstone Family Centers. And you've just met Justice Centers. So we've got a lot of, you know, other programs going on, you know, women shelters, that is the Pacifica House and Ben Paran. So those are the things that you want to partner with them because it will be a nice space for them to go visit and have activities over there. So I'm excited and definitely I'll be there for the grand open. Thank you.
Thank you. And we appreciate your advocacy too. If there are nonprofits you're familiar with, I mean, Ryan has been so diligent in doing outreach, but a lot of it really relies on the word of mouth.
To the chair. Thank you, Councilwoman Manning, for bringing this to the city. And thank you to the staff for fast-tracking everything and getting them open so quickly. Thank you and welcome to the community. I look forward to buying some gear.
Thank you for your presentation. There's a lot that you've got going on indoors. I'm glad that you have a building the size that it is to accommodate. Is it similar to other sport, Big Five and things like this? The prices, the, yeah.
So yes, we like to think that particularly in Southern California, we're filling the void that Sports Authority and Sports Chalet left. You know, it's similar to REI where we have a lot of backcountry gear. We're also similar to Dick's Sporting Goods where we have all the team sports. So if you put those together and make it feel like a Trader Joe's, and we're there. So it's a lot of fun.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But yes, price-wise, we are competitive. And with our basement tier membership that offers 10% off, we are coming in at a great deal.
Oh, so you gotta be a mem, you gotta be a member to shop there?
No, you do not have to be a member to shop there, but we have a membership program that guarantees you 10% off for life. So that is, and it's free to sign up for probably the first year that we'll be open.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome to the City of Hawthorne. And I'm looking to see what your running shoe selection is.
Sweet.
Especially ASICS. So that's my Nahuca, ASICS. Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause and welcome.
Thanks, guys.
Oral communications, please.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the City Manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Okay. Who do we have? Pat Donelson, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, excuse me, City Council and everyone that's here, the chief and chiefs-to-be and captains. Patricia Donaldson, President and CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. I just want you to know that Ryan and his company joined the chamber today, so I'll be giving them the plaque on the 22nd.
Okay, great.
I would like to also say that on November 12th, we're going to have the meet and greet. City Councilwoman Fay Johnson asked us to have it with Von. And we'll have two vendors there. Already there, everyone's all ready for all this. And we have a new chamber member that his company is called A La Carte Cuisine. He's going to be one of the vendor, food vendors for November 12th. And that'll be from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. And then we have our Thanksgiving giveaway with the city and the chamber, which will be on November 25th at 1:00 PM, where the Hawthorne Memorial Center is, but on the Doty and El Segundo side where the parking lot is. Am I correct? Uh huh. And that's at 1:00 PM. And then December 22nd, we'll be doing the same thing but adding toys. So hopefully anyone that needs to have food, turkeys, toys, and underprivileged, low-income veterans, seniors, they can call me on my cell phone, 310-754-9564. You don't have to register, you just show up and we'll be happy to serve you. And the only other thing that I would like to mention on the e-bikes is I hope that when they're selling them, that someone is going to mention to them that they cannot ride on the sidewalk. Because I can't tell you how many times we have, all our employees at the chamber have walked out and almost got hit because they are doing, they're coming on the sidewalk. In fact, one chamber member that joined the chamber had walked outside and almost got hit also. So I hope that someone's going to tell them that not to ride on the sidewalk. Besides that, everything is set. Thank you very much. Mm-hmm. Oh, sure.
All right. I'm going to invite Neela Michelin, trustee. You were standing up there. You were going to, you're just, just, we want to say hi to you and if you could, you know, just give us a little.
Thank you, Mayor. Neela Michelin, Vice President of the El Camino Board of Trustees. And it was great to be at the K-9 Dinner. We had a lot of fun, great event. And congratulations to Officer Tomitani. I knew you since you were a patrol officer. You're officer's officer, you've always been there for the community, and you're always there to cooperate with El Camino. So thank you. Thank you for your service. Today, we had the HBCU caravan coming to El Camino and our students were able to learn about historically black colleges and universities. So that was a great event. And Thursday, from 1:00 to 3:00, we're going to have the Dia de los Muertos celebration at our Anthropology Museum and at our library. And there's going to be a dance performing as well. And there's going to be a 3:00 PM reception at the art gallery. And that's going to be on Thursday, this Thursday. Tuesday, we're going to have a discussion for our veterans. We bring the veterans together. Veterans are very important for El Camino and they're going to have a discussion on returning to college and to the community. And that's going to be at the East Dining Room on Tuesday, November the 4th. And also on November the 4th at 6:00 PM, we're going to have a free scholarship Zoom presentation, all about Sally Mae, types of applying, scholarship essays. And that's going to be on the El Camino website. So go to the El Camino website for the Zoom link. Wednesday, November the 5th, is going to be our big college night. And that's when we have colleges from all over the country come to El Camino. We're going to have workshops and that's going to be open to all students, parents, and anybody interested in going back to college, even adult learners. And on Monday, November the 10th, we have our Veterans Day event. It's called Heroes Among Us at the East Dining Room, and that's going to be at 11:00 AM. All of these events are open to the public. All of these events are on our website, on our homepage. And for more information, please go to our website for all these great events. Thank you very much.
I'm going to go through the last card and then I'll open it up to the speakers that haven't turned in a card. Gordon Michael Migo.
Okay. Well, everyone, Gordon Michael Migo, native and resident of Hawthorne since October 28, In consideration of, you know, the parks that are sorely lacking in certain areas of the city and all that, I have suggested, I put it forward to Vontray Norris and all, and now I'm going to present it to you, is that up on 115th Street, you know, just west of Hawthorne Boulevard, there is that, you know, closed-off section, they have a dead-end, you know, blockade. Anyway, there's a road that goes straight, but also has like a little curvature road that goes around that. And so I propose that we could actually close off that straight portion and connect the two basically semicircles together to make it one park, and you still have a roadway that goes around it. And, and that could be like a pocket park. And it could be very nice, you know, with, you know, cooking and, you know, sit-down areas and, you know, and be really nice for the people in the area there. On another matter, the Civic Center, the remake that various considerations have been made and all that. And I really believe, and I've talked to so many people, residents, business people and all that, they say, if you're going to be building up a new city hall, let's, let's go big, you know, and it's, let's build it over there, basically along the Boulevard, much like the old police station that had been on 126th Street. Now we have the Hawthorne Police Station front and center in Hawthorne Boulevard. That's where our new city hall should be. And basically you have plenty of room where the parking lot over the Bank of America, which, you know, the city owns all that property. And a very ornate building, you know, could be three, four stories. And you could have all the important elements in that building there and it'd be, it could be set back, you know, nice grass, you know, you have clock, you know, clock tower, you have the flag, of course, and, and whatever else. And it'd be really something to see. People be driving up and down the Boulevard like, ooh, ah, wow, you know. And then you have, and most important is to have the parking directly underneath the building for safety, convenience, and otherwise. And that's also important. Any kind of structure, the parking should be underneath. The employees should not have to go out beyond. And I find it really kind of interesting that we're finally getting to the point where we're going to really make our city great again. So I think we should go that route so that we can really be a real standout, shining city on the hill. Lastly, businesses on Hawthorne Boulevard, windows have been broken, they're plate glass windows. Hawthorne Hardwork, Clark Realty, Eddie Brothers, MJ Mark, GNS Pinning, Rouse, Riley Auto Parts.
Sorry, sir, your time is up.
Yeah. So.
Sorry, sir, your time is up.
Yeah, I understand that.
All right.
Opening up to all the speakers who haven't turned in a card. If you want to address the City Council, form a line, please.
Hey, good evening, good evening. I haven't been here in a while. Missed all of you guys, Ms. Gordon, haven't seen them in quite some time. Came bearing some gifts for the women on our council, the elected officials. Found this really cool little doohickey, right? Put it on bottom of your phone and it's a fan. All right? So I got something for all the ladies if you guys want a toy.
Hey, David, what are you trying to say?
I'm not saying anything. Might be a fun toy that you might want to play with.
I feel discriminated.
I'm not insinuating anything. I apologize for the, to the gentleman.
It gets hot up here. It gets hot up here.
I didn't come with enough gifts. Um, yeah, I remember when I was, you know, up there, there's been different opinions about the, the temperature in the room. The Dodgers are playing, I heard. Looks like.
I wish I had this last week.
Looks like we're at the top of the eighth. Blue Jays is up 6 to 1. So whatever that means, I don't really, I don't really understand sports much. I want to commend our acting city attorney's appointment. It's good to have a city attorney with actual municipal law experience. I always appreciate that. And I wanted to say what's up to our outgoing chief of police. I really, you know, I found out that he was retiring, so I had to come out, you know, just left work. I'm sure you guys can see the attire, just left work and wanted to, you know, give my congratulations to whatever the next steps are and commend you on a long career. How long have you been with the City of Hawthorne? Over 30 who?
Ooh, yep.
31 years. That, that, you know, I'm sure everybody already applauded you, but I want to give you a round of applause for that. Our last two chiefs are the ones that I've known the most, and both of them have been great men. And our current chief, Tomitani, make sure I get the names right, I messed up one time, is just a really good dude. And so I appreciate your leadership, I appreciate the way that you represent the profession of, of law enforcement. You know, there is a lot of people who don't represent that badge well, and you, you represent it well. You have been instrumental in transforming my relationship with law enforcement. My, my relationship with law enforcement hadn't always been positive here in the City of Hawthorne. You know, I have a lot of crazy stories like a lot of people do when I was a teenager. And as an adult, you know, I've had the opportunity to support the police department in recruitment efforts and learning from the police department and how to be safe with a firearm and, and understanding kind of the, the processes of recruitment and, and all that stuff. So I want to, I want to thank you, I want to commend you, I wish you success in whatever you have next. And I look forward to the next chief and his, his positive impact and leadership in the City of Hawthorne. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Hello, everyone. I'm Hansel from Glitter Brothers United. I want to thank all of you for being here despite all that's happening and affecting people all over the world. I feel like, we probably all feel the same. We open social media or watch the news and it's always something going on, from Sudan to Congo to Palestine to, I for one, have family in Jamaica who are dealing with this horrible hurricane. Thankfully, they're, they're okay. And I pray that everyone else is okay as well. But obviously, there are things that are happening here in our city, in the country. And I want to highlight the fact that this past Sunday, October 26th, myself, colleagues, and a couple other members of the community, join Community Loving. They have like a monthly free market where people can go and get free clothes, free diapers and other items that people need during these times. We hosted our first food drive. And that was something that, as you guys know, we've been here multiple times asking for Hawthorne to bring their food program back. We've offered our help. And that offer is still there if the city wants to work towards bringing the food program back. However, we are no longer just asking. We told people that we were going to try to make it ourselves. And I'm very proud and I'm thankful for everyone that's donated, whether it's dried food, whether it is money as well. With that, we were able to do the food, like I said, our first food drive. We got 60 bags of fresh produce as well as dried goods. So 60 families, we were able to help them. I also want to say that on November 23rd, we'll be doing the next one. We're hoping to make this a monthly thing. We'll be at Landra Park once again. And we are hoping to have a lot more than 60 bags. And I want to ask everyone here, well, I want to thank you guys once again for being here. Like I said, there's a lot going on, but you guys made time to show up and care about your city. And I ask you once again, by the same token, that you care for each other. I'm aware that there are multiple food drives, there are people in North Hawthorne who don't want. who don't wanna food drive for whatever reason. But I ask you to look after each other, and if you guys wanna be involved with this food program that we're doing, you may. You guys can follow us on social media, Good Neighbors United. You guys can talk to me if you guys wanna be of any help. I also have something, like a little on the grim side to share, but I think it's important I do. There was a Halloween party this past weekend, high school Halloween party, I was not there. However, it was in Delayer, so a lot of us probably know, some of us may not know, but there was a shooting there, unfortunately. And of course, it's terrible that it happened. But I happen to know that the gentleman that was shot very well, it was his home. He was chaperoning his little brother's party. And I'm glad to share that he's fine and recovering. I just hope that we're able to, again, keep each other safe, and I hope PD is able to follow up and get some good leads on this, 'cause I know his family very well, and it affected me, classmates of mine, and other people that I know. So anyways, November 23rd or 2nd, food drive, get with me if you guys wanna help. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody else lined up, so I will declare oral communication close order. Your first item.
Mr. Mayor, I have five items on the city clerk's consent calendar, items seven through eleven for your consideration and approval. Item seven, the city treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item eight, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on Tuesday, October 28th, 2025's agenda. Item nine, resolution 8559, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Hawthorne, California. Item 10, resolution 8560, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Item 11, resolution 8561, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, in support of the Crown Act, SB 188 for adoption.
Second.
Please vote.
Oh, I don't know what's happening here. Oh, here we go.
The votes are in. The voter reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Ordinances, please.
There are no ordinances at this time. Have a bid opening.
Yeah, go ahead for the bid.
Item 12, now is the time and place to declare publicly received sealed bids for Holly Park Restroom renovation, project number 25-07. There were six bids received, all were accompanied by bidder bonds. The prices are as follows. Pub Construction, $1,439,000 from Diamond Bar, California. Germax Construction of San Fernando, California, their bid was $779,000. Steady Solutions Incorporated of Westlake Village, California, their bid was $1,047,787. Classic Engineering and Construction of Orange, California, their bid was $1,144,500. Far West Contractors in Placentia, California, their bid was $1,318,888. Newman Midland Corporation of Long Beach, California, their bid, $1,242,90.
I move to accept.
Second.
Please vote. And to refer to staffer study and recommendation, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, please vote.
The votes are in. Voter reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Okay. There's no public hearings at the time, and there are no general matters, so we'll move on to the city manager's consent calendar. Madam Clerk, can you read items 13 and 17 on his behalf, please?
Item 13, Measure M Funding Agreement MM507.16 between the City of Hawthorne and Metropolitan Transportation Authority to design street improvements for the Jack Northrup Improvement Project, an appropriation of $200,000 from the general fund balance for this project. Item 14, Measure M Funding Agreement MM5507.17 between the City of Hawthorne and the Metropolitan Transportation Authority to design street improvements for the Van Ness Improvement Project, an appropriations of $200,000 from the general fund balance for this project. Item 15, Award of Contract for Holly Park Restroom Renovation, project number 25-07. Item 16, Approval of an Agreement Between the City of Hawthorne and the City of Los, oh, and Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department for Costs Related to Academy Recruit Training. Item 17, Fourth Amendment to the Consultant Agreement for Design Services, Fourth Amendment between the City of Hawthorne City and Office Untitled Consultant. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. May I have the motion to approve items 13 through 17?
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. Voter reflects mayor and council voting yes.
The city attorney's consent calendar is next. Madam Clerk, can you read item 18 on behalf of the city attorney's office, please?
Item 18, Claim for Personal Injury and Physical Assault by Monte J. Collins. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council deny the claim by Monte J. Collins.
I'll move.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. Voter reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Okay, we have an item from, discussion item from council member Manning. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hello? Okay. Thank you, Mayor. In the effort of transparency, and also because, I would say, protocol as well, I was wanting to have our council support me in requesting that we get RFP for a realtor. So as you just read, our city clerk just read off the bids for building developing property. But as it regards to having a realtor for our purchase, we don't have a formal process. And so because we don't, I think it should match. If we can have bids for people to develop, we should have a process for hiring a realtor. So I'm asking if we could have a RFP to hire a realtor to be able to purchase assets for the city of Hawthorne. And I wanted to hear feedback. Does that make, Angie, you looking, like, are you clear on what I'm asking?
I'm in pain, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause you're looking, okay. Sorry for your pain.
Okay.
Anybody need clarification what I'm requesting? Mayor, you good?
My understanding is that, the commercial estate brokerage services, when somebody, what we've seen is people come in that are trying to sell properties to the city, they already have a realtor on their behalf. So what would, what would the purpose of us having somebody on our end?
Because when you are representing the city, then we don't have anybody to represent the city as a realtor. We have to find one. So when they come in, they have a realtor, and what you don't want is for that realtor to represent both the city and the opposing, the person who is buying the property from us. You wanna have your own realtor for the city. And, go ahead.
No, but if they come in with the realtors, a property comes in, tries to sell something, they have a realtor that's associated with them, they would have a contract with that person. How could they enter into a contract with us at the same time?
So what I'm saying to you is, if I wanna buy something from the city, I'm the realtor, I'm representing the buyer, right? So in order to go into a contract with that person, we need somebody to represent us. Otherwise, that realtor will represent both parties, and we don't want someone else representing us. We want our own, we want our own realtor to represent us when we purchase assets. So why would we want somebody that's not going to be in our favor? We want somebody who's going to make sure that whatever property that we buy, that they're making sure that they're doing their due diligence to make sure that we get a fair shake, and make sure that they're not trying to pull a fast one over us. We want somebody to represent us as a city. And again, like I said, when we go out to have projects developed, we do a bid. We ask for people to come and bid. If you look at this paper here, we have all of these companies that have bid to develop whatever project that we have. So when we get ready to buy a property, it's the same process. We wanna have our own realtor to go in and make a bid on behalf of the city of Hawthorne. We don't want to go to the seller and say, we wanna use your realtor to represent us.
But that's, I mean, I'm not trying to just, I'm not trying to throw you off or anything, it's just, I don't understand, I don't understand why we would have a realtor. We, I think we've been doing mighty fine when they come in with their associated realtor that's representing them. We've been able to sift through things that are, what you call it, just don't sound the best in our favor. We've had staff, we've had the city attorney's office that has advised us. And the only reason I said about, because I think the way you framed it earlier, which maybe we were speaking, we were speaking fast, was that they would represent us both. Of course, they don't represent us. We have enough of a team over here, I think, to be able to sift through everything that's being presented.
Yeah, but none of us are commercial realtors, and we cannot represent the city in a commercial deal when we purchase property. When our staff work with other people, they're not the realtors.
I mean, that's just my initial feelings.
Yeah, I understand, and it's okay, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear about what I'm saying, and I wanna make sure that you understand what I'm saying. I'm asking that we have our own realtor to represent us when we decide to purchase property. None of us here are representing us when we're buying property. That's a conflict of interest.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I understand what Ms. Manning is trying to say, but I think at this time, because we're gonna basically put a pause into buying more real estate, you know, and also because we do have an economically developed consultant that's called Cosmon, and they also have an arm of real estate agency that we can always use, because they already is our consultant for economic development. And because I don't think to have a real estate on board, and then we're not gonna be buying more property, like I said, for the immediate future, because we need to look in our budget, because we know federal government is cutting, 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 especially the CDBG funds and home funds is on the budgeting cuts of the president. If that happens, so the city have to come up with $2 million to run the housing department. So I would say to put a break on those specific RFP, because I don't think we're gonna be buying more property in the immediate future. And also, we have to come up with some strategy for next year, 2026, when some other things might come to our shore that we need to deal with. I don't wanna mention name right now, but if you got an email, you'd need to know what I'm talking about. So I think it's prudent is not to put an NFPU out there, because it's gonna be taking time, staff, and then we have to select someone that's just gonna stay, and sometime we're not gonna use them. So I think because we do have the Cosmon, that is our economically developed consultant, and they have an arm of the real estate, so we can use them in the meantime, if, in fact, we're gonna buy any property in the immediate future. That's my suggestion.
Anybody else have anything to say?
To the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I think it's a good idea, but after listening to council member Montero, you remember Cosmon, and associates that came out and did a presentation? They're gonna be helping us, from what I understand, Vaughn, right? With our economic development endeavors, and then pretty much kinda give us the needs of Hawthorne.
Yes, that's correct. They will present at the next council meeting.
Oh, they will be here next council meeting. Okay, since this is the month of October, we're nearing the holidays. I will, I will go ahead and I'll yield back to you, council member Manning, and maybe hopefully look at this again next year. But I do want Cosmon to do a presentation to provide us what they're gonna provide us, but at the same time, ask them about real estate also. He's, he's really, he's been in the South Bay for many years. He's been a council member, he's been, I mean, everywhere. He does a lot of presentations for California cities, League of Cities. And so I will just wait to hear what Cosmon has to say about cities, our city endeavors, especially with our new specific plan and our volunteers that are looking at all of our upcoming projects, et cetera, and wait, wait to see what the need is for next year. Thank you. Thank you. So I just wanted to say a few things, and then we can move on. I think it's important to understand that as a realtor, you don't get paid until you sign and close a deal. If we were to get a realtor now, realtors understand, brokers understand, that you don't get paid. So preparing ahead of time is important. We can take our time in choosing who it is that we want with the idea of being prepared. Not, we should be prepared and not have to worry about getting prepared. I wanna do this because I want it to be transparent. I think it's important that we follow the same procedure that we do as it regards to when we're building a property. Things change all the time. You don't know that we may not or may buy a property next year. This is your opinion, not the opinion of the entire council. For you to say, we're not going to buy, I believe that's a collective decision that we all collectively agree on. And so for you to say that, that means that you're speaking on behalf of everybody, when that is not the case. And so for me, I still think it's very important that we have our own realtor, and I just want to make clear that today, that I have requested for us to have our own realtor, because we're doing so much, and we're moving forward, and amazing things are happening in our city. In order for us to grow, we have to take the time and have the appropriate people in place so that when something comes along, we don't have to get ready, we will already be ready. And again, I will mention this, that when you get a broker, they are clearly aware that they don't get paid until they close escrow. And so I just wanna make known that this is something that I'm not gonna shy away from, that I'm gonna continue to request that we have our own realtor. Thank you.
Look, I just wanna make a couple of points, and I really appreciate you for bringing it up, because if it's about us protecting us from any proposals that are brought before us by people who are selling the property, and you're right, we need to protect ourselves. And that's what I got from this, this effort that, you know, you brought before us. But it just doesn't make sense if there's going to be, the usual, the sellers of properties have had a realtor that's been associated with them, that's gonna gain a commission from the seller, right? So if we have somebody over here on our end, that person would be gaining a commission for the purchase of that property, and they're just serving as a resources to check on the validity and the strength and the, you know, just how good of a proposal they're offering us, or if they're trying to pull a fast one on us. So I really didn't know this about the Cosmon Group, that they had that real estate arm that's associated with them. I imagine it must be strong enough that we can employ them, so we already have an existing resource that we... resource that we're already under contract with. Is that correct? We have like a blanket, like a retainer type of situation, or what, Mr. City Manager?
Uh, we do have a contract for economic development, and as Mayor Protemp mentioned, they have an arm of real estate, if that's the direction this council wants to go in.
So for like, for us to, to give a commission to a broker, if all we, we need and the, the, the purpose of this whole thing is just to protect the city and its decisions when it comes to real estate, I think we already have something in place that it would be redundant and an added expense, actually, so, but...
It costs nothing.
Well, I mean, if we have a, if we have a broker, if, they're not going to, how are they going to get, they're going to get paid, so it's, yes.
They only get paid when the escrow closes.
I know, but that, there's, that's still, that's an added expense that we're going to incur, when we already have an existing resource that is going to serve the same purpose. That's just...
I'm sorry, Mayor, but I think you're not really understanding how the process work. You only get, when you get services from them, they're representing us in the deal, and they're negotiating on behalf of the city. There is not an extra, extra added expense. If we decide to purchase a property and we use Cosmo, Cosmo will get paid the commission if we use their real estate person. So whoever negotiates the deal, closes it on behalf of the city, is the person who gets the commission. So I'm fine, I just want us to be very transparent in terms of when we purchase a property. If we have a realtor through Cosmo, fine, but I want to make sure that we're not looking for realtors when it's time, and if somebody just shows up, we just use them because they're available. I want to make sure that we're using people that's going to benefit and look out for our best interests.
To the chair. I 100% understand where you're coming from. I'm a real estate broker. I think Cosmon is a good way for us to go, because they already know what we're trying to develop in the city. They're, they understand what our goals are, where our finances are. If they come across a piece of property in their business of helping us grow our city, I think, I have no doubt, they'll bring it to us. To do, I'm not quite sure what an RFP would do. I don't understand how that would work with a, putting it out to real estate brokers or real estate agents. I don't, I don't, not familiar with that.
It's a hiring process. It's like HR, when they want to hire employees, they put out applicant, they put out something that says, "Hey, we're looking to fill this role." This is the process that we go through when we're trying to do business for the city as it regards to asset purchase.
Okay. I think, personally, I think we're, we're covered. If we do need an agent at the time that we're, we find a piece of property, we want to move forward with, with Cosmon. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We're going to be doing elected officials' reports. City Treasurer's Office, okay. Now, City Clerk's Office, go ahead. City Clerk?
I want to thank everyone for coming out. I want to start with thanking Chief Tomatani for his 31 years of service here, and I've gotten to know him over the past few years since I've been elected here, and he's absolutely amazing, very much about community, and I'm just, just excited for him to be able to chill out and do his fishing and, and traveling and maybe some sports stuff or whatever he does. And that's pretty much it about that. Thank you so much, Chief. I want to thank everyone, the staff here. I know I drive everybody crazy here with public records requests, and, you know, coming by, giving you guys like so many emails about public records requests, and everybody here is so accommodating. I know it's, can be a little bit of a, a pain, especially when we have so many things going on. I want to thank Kauanabui for being my twin today with the pink blazer. I want to welcome David Casares to our council here. I want to thank Angie Reyes English so much for her support, for her, you know, for her support of the Clerk's Office, and for everything that you do. You asked very pointed questions tonight. I love what you asked, and I do appreciate that. And I want to thank Katrina also for supporting me also, for being Democrat of the Year. She came to the ceremony, it was great having you there, and thank you both for that. I wanted to say, "Go Dodgers," but David gave us the bad news.
What? Are you serious?
Is it over?
Pretty much.
Is it?
Yes, pretty much over. I want to thank Ricky so much. Ricky, you are just amazing. My staff knows you well. Whenever he comes in, obviously, like, "Okay, the guy's here with the paper," and all the clippings and stuff, it's so nice, keeps me abreast of everything going on here, all the neighboring cities. I appreciate you so much. That is a very valuable thing that you do, and I know it's a thankless job, you don't get paid for it, but just thank you, just know that we all appreciate you. I appreciate you. And that is pretty much it for me. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Fay Johnson?
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. And Chief, I have a tissue over here for you. But I do want to thank the chief again. I think 31 years of doing anything is remarkable. And while you'll be missed, a sign of a great leader is when that leader can remove themselves and their department doesn't skip a beat, because you, as the leader, have put in place systems and processes that will continue on beyond you, character and integrity that you've bred, bred into your team, and I have no doubt that that is what's going to happen when you leave. But we will miss you, and we thank you very much. Want to say happy birthday to Mrs. Santa Claus?
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Yay, happy birthday. Just sing happy birthday.
Oh, we have to sing happy birthday? That, that's what Angie said. She's making me do it, so. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Santa Claus. Happy birthday to you. And thank you to the Fire Department for all that they do for us in their presentation coming out this evening. We appreciate you. And then also to the New Star Family Justice Center, we want to say again, thank you for all your service. I do want to talk a little bit tonight about a difficult subject for us, but I think it's something that we do need to talk about as a team from the council. Being on council, being new on council, there are some things that I'm becoming familiar with and trying to figure out, navigate my way, and the staff is awesome, they're always there to answer my questions and to help me to navigate my way. But one thing that I think that the council has to, to solve from our vantage is when we give directives to our staff, sometimes I'm confused, who's asking for what? Do we have to vote on it? Is it something, i- if I'm quiet, is it because I don't agree, or I do agree, or I didn't hear, or I don't understand? And I think that's part of the reason why we had conflict in our last council meeting. And, and in my opinion, I believe that if we actually make it really clear that we're putting a directive out, and then that directive has to be voted on like anything else that we do from here, that, that's a clear delineation. Everybody knows, the city knows, the staff knows, the council knows, the people watching knows that somebody from up here is asking for something to be done by staff, and everybody is clearly saying, "We agree" or "disagree." So I'm asking the council at this time, just so that we can do, have a system in place that we adopt that, where if we want to do a directive that it, it has to be voted on, we make that determination to do that, so it's clear.
I agree. I would vote on that.
Excuse me, I think the city attorney should chime in on that.
I was just about to. I, I can add that we actually already have something on the books. Municipal Code Section 2.06 Point 230 does talk about the directions and instructions from city council and limit on directives. So I, like you, are still getting familiar with the process and the code here at the city, and I discovered, quite frankly, that each council member during each meeting shall make no more than two directives to the city manager at any city council meeting. At that point, staff does have a chance to discuss and explain why such direction would not be warranted. And then, however, upon making, if there is, and also, for example, as, as I was listening very carefully as to the discussion item, the council member Manning, I, I was hearing opposition. If there was an actual objection, then at that point, the council would have to vote on that. So you're limited to two directives, you can have a discussion. If there's an objection, and you don't have a consensus that I can tell, then I would chime in next time and indicate that we should probably conduct a vote, so the direction to staff is clear. So it's already on the books, and we can just help enforce that.
Okay, so the, the last situation is a prime example. In your understanding, are we moving forward with RFPs or we're not?
No, no, not at all, because I think we have...
And I think if we had a vote at this, that time, it would be very clear to everybody that's watching and our staff, so they're not asking, "Well, was that approved?" or "Was it not approved?"
Correct.
So we are supposed to be voting on those things?
Well, no, I think if it's unclear, and here tonight, I think we had a clear consensus that was a vote tomorrow. I was keeping track, it's four to five, four to one. There was a suggestion that we table it until January, and so I took that as the, the direction that was provided did not, I wouldn't suggest that it would move forward. If there was ambiguity at that time, and then if I wasn't clear, I would ask for a vote.
Could I, is it okay if I ask you a question? Or just pose a question? I know it's your time, but just, uh, I think it's up. Look, if something comes from me, you know, and nobody says something, and, you know, and at the end, everybody like has like a disagreement behind the scenes, and then I would like to avoid having the city attorney's office and the city attorney be the bad guy for pushing for something or misunderstanding something, and therefore upsetting me or upsetting somebody, some of the council members who say, "Hey, well, nobody objected, and it's unclear, and, you know, you're, you're having to weigh, what was it? What was it?" I think we should default, just real quick, that's a default to a voting situation, like almost instant, instantaneously.
You can do that.
So, I mean, there, that's my feedback on that, real quick.
Thank you.
You can do that.
I just think it's clearer that way.
I would agree.
And I don't like, you know, we shouldn't have conversations afterwards that, "Well, no, I didn't understand what was going on, so, you know, or I missed it, or I didn't know that's what they were asking for." I think if we have a vote...
The council can absolutely do that. I had to listen to the last council meeting, council meeting maybe three or four times to have clear understanding.
Exactly.
So, yeah, we can do that.
Are we all okay with that?
I was going to add more when it's my time.
Okay.
On that, but...
Take a vote?
We should take a vote.
We, we can, we can do that on the directive.
Do you want to wait until we get to you, Mayor?
I'll just restate it under me, and I promise to do it. I just want to, I don't want to take up your time. Yeah, that's all.
All right, I appreciate it. And that's all for me. Thank you, guys.
Right. Councilwoman Katrina Manning?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say, "Chief, I'm going to miss you, my teddy bear. Congratulations, 31 years." Ricky, I took pictures, so I'm going to send them to you. Congratulations to New Justice Service. I think you're doing great work. Also, I want to say, I am super proud of Dana for becoming Democrat of the Year. She looks so beautiful. And I also want to take the time to say, "Thank you for my birthday cake. It was so good." Thank you. If you ever need somebody to bake for you, this is the lady right here. Thank you so much. That cake was so good. Also, this is really interesting. I had an opportunity to attend Danny Bakewell dedication ceremony of his name of the street off of Crenshaw and Obama. And what's so interesting about that is 25 years ago, Danny Bakewell actually owned the mall, and he sold the mall to the Gabay's. So I thought that was so interesting, but I had an opportunity to celebrate hi- his naming of the street. It was a fantabulous event. Also, I want to say happy birthday, I guess he left, I don't know if he, he mentioned it, but former council member Nilo Michelin, he, he is turning 60 years old, and Von, if you could prepare a certificate of recognition for his contributions to the city, I'm going to deliver that to him at his 60th birthday celebration. The other thing I had an opportunity to attend, and this was such an amazing event, the ribbon cutting of Hawthorne High School. What a fantabulous feel, all of the sports feel, it is so beautiful. If you have an opportunity, please go by there and look at all of the beautiful soccer track. I think, what was it, soccer track and what else? Baseball, baseball.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's, it's really, really, really beautiful. Also, I also had a lot of fun at Eucalyptus Elementary Hawthorne, I mean, Halloween party. The kids did a parade in their costumes, and, oh my God, they looked so cute. I miss my daughter being such a young folk, young baby girl, to see her in her costumes. It was so much fun. Also, I want to say congratulations to Sanctuary of Hope. They celebrated their 15-year anniversary, and I had an opportunity to present them a certificate of recognition on behalf of City of Hawthorne, and they send their love to us. Thank you so much. They said, "Thank you." Also, I went to Taste of Soul. It was about 300,000 people that attended Taste of Soul, and I spent my time at the gospel stage, and what a time was had. And then I dipped out and went to go see Cameo, which is on the other stage, and they did, oh my God, the music still sounds fresh. So I had a, a great time. And, yeah, that's it for me. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can we have clarification on the proclamation as far as what the city attorney mentioned? Should we take a vote or consensus moving forward for signatures?
It was a proclamation for a former council member, as I understand.
Should we just do it verbally? Verbally would suffice?
You can vote, whatever you like to do.
Would, on some of them verbally, so, okay. We'll, we'll establish that right at, at the end, okay?
This is ridiculous. I mean, we already get notification from Catherine in the city, in our administrative offices, if we could sign a certificate, so it's very...
I think for right now, if we could just have a concurrence, and then we'll just discuss that and, and refer to what the process is, just for clarification. So I concur. Sounds good? Good? Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Councilwoman Angie Reyes English?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just, first of all, mention some of the, the things that I attended. Let's see. I want to congratulate the Church of the Nazarene on their 100-year celebration, and also to Pastor Garcia for his 40 years of service. And thank you to Pastor Greg and his wife for also being there. It was great to see them. I want to also thank Pastor Greg and, and Councilmember Montero on the community giving. I appreciate that. If I could please have Von 250 from my stipend to go to community feeding to help. And then I also want to provide the Ministers Association that does our annual Thanksgiving feeding. Thank you for what you guys do every year for our families. If you could also provide them with the 250 stipend to assist them in their efforts. I look forward to our Operation Gobble 18th Annual, along with the Chamber of Commerce on the 25th at Betty Ainsworth Parking Lot. This has been a long endeavor, and this is going to be the first time partnering with the Chamber, but I look forward to everything that's going to be given away. It looks like they have quite, quite a bit. I don't know what they're going to do as far as registration, but I do believe it's Hawthorne residents only and to register for that. Let's see, I also would like to... I also would like to commend the 51st Annual Black Flight Attendants of America, Inc. I want to acknowledge the honoring they did for myself and thank you, Councilmember Montero, for joining me. It's a very, very heavy, nice plaque. It's Black Flight Attendants of America, founded 1974, serving the skies and the community with the medal that they provided, just in support of all their efforts and what they do. I had made mention that my nephew's a pilot on American Airlines and I hear all the horror stories and so I just have to, you know, acknowledge the flight attendants and all that they do in their service to the skies and the people. I also would like to make mention a couple of grand openings. The Holly Park Restrooms Tuesday, November 18th at 10:00 a.m. Groundbreaking ceremony. Again, the Operation Gobble Turkey giveaway on Tuesday, November 25th at 1:00 p.m. The Hawthorne Eats, is that the One City, One Week unless, is this the one that we have here, Vaughn, at our Restaurant Week?
Restaurant Week, that's in January. Yes, that's correct. So I think I mentioned the staff report. Do you want me to communicate?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely. So what we're trying to do is get ready for the regional events that are coming up. With the help of Councilwoman Fay Johnson and staff, we've been able to initiate a week of restaurants to establish economic development in the city. We'll have a kickoff meet and greet for VIPs on that Sunday. I don't have the date in front of me. I think it's January 26th, maybe. That'll be at Tapville. And during that week, we will have restaurants meet and greet for the council members that we'll send out to you per your request on where you would like to meet. We will establish a fine dining menu that we're looking for these restaurants to advertise meals for $10. And hopefully, we can bring foot traffic into their place of business. And then we'll have a closeout food truck event here at City Hall on 126th Street. And this is all in collaboration for FIFA LA 28 to get ready for these mass events that are coming our way.
Thank you.
No problem.
Paper shredding and e-waste collection, November 15th, 9 to 1:00 p.m. These are all favorites in the community. Halloween Celebration coming up Thursday, October 30th. The 30th Annual Awards Ceremony for South Bay Workforce Investment Board, October 30th in Torrance. The Halloween Teen Center, it'll 17th Annual Anniversary on November 5th. There's so much going on. Oh, my goodness. I would like to thank all the presenters and those that presented this evening. I would also like to thank Robert Kim, our city attorney, for his service and efforts, especially on the Hawthorne Mall. I also would like to thank him for his service as a prosecutor and his dedication as a city attorney. I wish him well. I look forward to seeing him and speaking with him soon. It was really shocking, I think, for most because I got phone calls with regards to what occurred and not to be in length, but to just make mention that he will be missed. And it's really unfortunate that he parted the way he did. However, I understand. And again, I look forward to being able to still be a part of, of his service and his service to the community. Vaughn, if you could please provide a certificate and/or a plaque to honor him for his 30 years of service as an attorney and a volunteer where he first started. And also, he did contract work, so 30 years is a long time. I too want to make mention with regards to what occurred in council last week. And I want to be very transparent because I received a lot of calls. I received a lot of information and as to what occurred. And I'm not totally in support of voting with, with regards to directives. As an elected by the people of Hawthorne, I, I am providing what I believe is best for the city, not what council members or the mayor think is best. And that's how I've always operated when it comes to assuring either policy or legislation that I'm providing is for, again, the betterment of Hawthorne, for its constituents, its businesses, and what I believe is best. And I, I sleep quite well knowing that I am working hard each and every day to do that as a representative of Hawthorne. When I provided a directive, it was because we were getting harassed by a union that emailed all of us. And the reason there was so much chaos is because you have people up here that don't read their emails and don't know what's going on. And so that's exactly what happened. And because I gave a directive to provide a cease and desist on a union that was harassing our workforce, that's what I was asking for. What occurred after that, the mayor stood up, came over and around and told the city attorney not to do it. So again, defying my authority. And then once he did that, the city attorney stood up and came and spoke to him and then came to me and told me, you can't do that. So that just goes to proof and show in transparency exactly what went down. So of course, I'm gonna be upset because I have someone interjecting on my authority. So that's exactly what happened. And when you have the middle person with the gavel pounding and pounding and pounding, where is he accountable? Who's holding him accountable? That's where I got upset and I had to say something because it's not fair. If you want equity up here and fairness, it's across the board. It's to be respected and it's to be fair. So with that, I am asking for the decorum to be rewritten because it's from 2019, signed by Russ Mihara and Paul Jimenez as the city clerk. So that whole decorum needs to be written and it has to include language as to what I just made mention. It has to include general, to include language, that members, including the mayor, must respect and follow council colleagues, council colleagues by staying in their seats and listening to the council proceedings without disruption and leaving their seats. This also is, unless they have to be excused for personal reasons out of the council chambers, all members and the mayor must be held accountable. And that's the language and reading that should be held in the decorum. However, I don't, I don't necessarily think that it's not gonna, you know, whatever has been happening is gonna end because this has been a history of continuing defiance with, when either I provide a recommendation or a directive, that it's always being followed with, you know, right behind me, a no or, you know, something like this. So again, we are all elected by the people of Hawthorne. We represent the people of Hawthorne. We represent the interest of the city. You can't believe for a minute when we're sitting up here and we're discussing something that it's not, it's not, it's not totally being fair because there's, there's things happening here on, on the council that is quite evident and quite obvious. So I just wanted to put that out there because I wanted folks that called me, that texted me, that made phone calls to me just to see how I was doing, just to check, to see what had happened. And when I explained the story, they said they saw it for themselves. They saw it for themselves. So I'm just trying to give the picture of what occurred. So when you're wanting to talk about city attorney making votes on items such as, you know, agreement or not agreement, I don't necessarily agree. I don't. And this, the only reason you have them interested now in making these votes, it's because of that incident that occurred. Up until that incident that occurred, we were fine giving directives. So I'm not, I'm not looking for a response. All I'm saying is it occurred. I was actually spoke with Councilmember Montero and I apologized to him because it occurred during a time that he was making a presentation and it shouldn't have been that way. We should have been in our seats. We should have been quiet and listening to council proceedings when he was speaking and that wasn't happening. And so I don't know if you have to do parliament procedures to remind us what those are, how those are conducted, but the decorum needs further language that speaks to equality and equal responsibility across the board. And I don't know, maybe each of us should be given a gavel. But thank you.
Just real quickly, I've been practicing law for almost 30 years. With all due respect, that's not my recollection. I indicated to you that the mayor was going to object. I don't, don't quite understand what you're stating.
I don't need-
Anyway, under, under the municipal code, it does indicate that each member, council member shall not be interrupted when speaking unless it's a call to order to him or her. And also, I could just advise, there are instances sometimes when I have to communicate with another council member if he or she is about to engage in a potential Brown Act violation or an error or cause or make a defamatory statement or anything. I've done that in the past where I politely advise a council member that you should, he or she should not go down a certain avenue. And so I just see that as my rule. So I think it would be a hindrance, quite frankly, if the city attorney, if the need comes up for him, he or she not to be able to discuss with any council members. And just for the record, I've treated all council members equally and fairly. I've always done that, so I'll leave it at that. There was a direction, a directive. So at this point, I don't know where we're at as far as whether or not direction is gonna be seconded or there's a consensus or a majority.
What was the directive? Can you repeat it?
As I understand it, the council member Angie Reyes English wanted to have the code of decorum changed so that the mayor couldn't stand up and, as I understand it, have an engage in a conversation with the city attorney or any other staff during, if you can help me, council member, what was the second part?
Yeah, that's not what I said.
Well, I'm asking for clarification.
I said all. So again, general, to include language that members and mayor must respect fellow colleagues by staying in their seats and listening to council proceedings without disruptions or leaving their seats, unless it's to excuse themselves for personal reasons and that would be to exit the chambers. And that all members, including the mayor, must be held accountable. And that includes the presiding officer and that includes the presiding officer to, to preserve order and decorum.
Looking for input from the council.
To the chair. I'm trying to understand, are you saying that every time we give a directive, that we have to vote?
Yes.
That we can give a directive?
No. So let me just read the ordinance here for you. So it does indicate, again, each council member shall make no more than two directives to the city manager at the city council meeting. And then actually, it technically states that any city council member making a directive to the city manager shall state the purpose of the directive, the reasons why the directive is warranted, and ways the directive would directly benefit the city. For example, economic development, job creation, raising the quality of life, or community safety. And request city staff to state any reason why the directive may not be warranted. For example, the directive duplicates a report or a task already accomplished in the recent past, or the report or task already exists in another format, or existing federal, state, or local resources already addressed the directive. Then it says, regardless of whether the staff states any reasons why the directive may not be warranted, another council member may object to the directive to the city manager. So you can object. Upon making such an objection, the city council shall vote. It does say shall. So if there is an objection, the code itself says the city council shall vote on whether the directive to the city manager shall be made. And then it says, unless affirmatively rejected by a majority vote, the directive made by one or more council members to the city council shall be considered a directive from the entire council as a whole. Staff shall comply with all directives to the city council as a whole. So if there is an objection, it does say shall, you shall vote on the direction, on the directive.
Thank you.
I'll speak under my time. I don't wanna, you know, take any of your time. All right.
Should we finish with the directive?
That's, I wanna speak about it under mine.
Or no?
A directive could be made, but you know, I'm gonna have a directive maybe to counter that, so. I mean, as of now, it stands until I speak, I suppose, and then we could, everybody could vote. Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Alex Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Thank you for listening as at home. I wanna say thank you to all the presenters. And please pay attention on the micro mobility project because I think it could be a potential that we can include in our pilot program for about studying for the parking and some other traffic congestion. Chief, again, congratulations on your retirement and 31 years, you know, it's a lifetime. And I know you're going to enjoy another 60 years of luxury. So make sure you do some good fun. Enjoy yourself out there, okay? Because that's what I'm gonna do in four years, so I'll have to catch up with you. So congratulations. Also, I wanna say, you know, for the people of Hawthorne, please go online and, and see this beautiful newsletter. See this? It's beautiful, Vaughn. Thank you for all the staff and your communication department and downstairs for the put this together. It's beautiful. Also, I wanna thanks the, the chief and the captain for sending us the monthly newsletter for the HBD. Outstanding report. I always love to see these reports, so thank you for that. I wanna say also that the Halloween Carnival last Saturday right here in front of City Hall was fantastic, so thank you, Kwanabui and the Parks and Recs and the Parks and Recs Commissioners for all you guys did. It was a fantastic job. And we saw, you know, a lot of kids coming with the parents. So I think we got maybe like, I don't know, thousands of kids, you know, having fun and playing games, so it was fantastic day. And then after that, I went to celebrate Mari Agnes' retirement party. Mari Agnes was the director of the Set Magro Center in Lenox. So she retired after 40 years of work, so it was outstanding to see a lot of old friends. Also, you know, I wanna say thank you to all of you who came for dinner on October 16th to raise money for the needy families for the holidays. So we thank you, Ms. English, for the donation. So we're still accepting donations because this, all the money is gonna go to the Children's of Hawthorne School District in December. So I'll give them gift card. I wanna say that the, I attend the sanitation district board meeting and we are contemplating 2026, the raising of this, of the sanitation fees for sewage, 2026. But I'm glad that they're looking at affordability and so probably is gonna be like $30 a year on your property tax starting 2026. The Clean Power Alliance have also welcomed three cities for October. It was the, you know, the Linwood, Port Wanimi, and Fillmore as a Clean Power Alliance member. So now we at 28 cities. And of course, the South Bay Coag. We have to keep looking because they're gonna bring us a project that the city council must vote on it. It's so-called the Housing Trust. They're trying to see maybe they can build a housing trust and it's going to come to our city maybe next month and have involve some member fee that we have to accept, okay? Again, I'm looking forward for the customer presentation next city council meeting to give us an update about economic development because in our city, like I said, we're trying to make sure that the city is gonna be well-prepared for all these events coming up in these three, four years down the road. And like Ms. English said, we attend the Church of Nazarene 100-year. Imagine this church right across the fire station. They've been there for 40 years, 100 years. And the pastor Jesus celebrates 40 years of service. So we got pastors, you know, 40 years dedicated to service and they provide a lot of things to our community. And again, the Grand Open of the Atlantic Field at the Hawthorne High was fantastic to see our bond dollar at work because it was $30 million bond that put those fields together and they look pretty good. So I'm glad to see that our bond dollar goes to the right, to the future of the children. Again, thank you for- Again, thank you for all of you for tonight, and it's going to be Halloween, so be safe out there and have fun.
Mr. Montero, do you want to talk about the council and the city hall?
Oh. Okay. Thank you, Vaughn. On the thirtieth, at eleven o'clock, the children's from the preschool, the castle for the Jim Thorpe Park, right? It's an annual tradition, they will come to city hall for tricky trick, right? So, they're coming at eleven o'clock, they're going to come and visit all the department, you know, they're three and four-year-old, so they're going to come and then visit the city hall and celebrate Halloween with the staff. So, I appreciate that, and thank you for Catherine for organizing that, and Vaughn, thank you for all the department that's going to be opening the doors for those kids. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Katrina Manning? Has a...
Thank you.
You forgot to mention something important.
Thank you. I actually have a couple of things. But, city manager, can you donate to Pastor Greg's, the event that Angie is supporting? Can you donate two hundred and fifty dollars from my stipends? Thanksgiving feeding?
Thanksgiving feeding.
Okay, Thanksgiving senior... I'm sorry, can you put three hundred? Oh, sorry. The other thing I wanted to ask, I'm not sure, but did we clarify what council meetings that we're having in the month of November? Because we talked about we're having to come in the day after we normally...
November twelfth.
November twelfth?
Yeah.
Okay.
The Halloween, the Thanksgiving one's off, right? Thanksgiving week one is...
That's off?
Yeah.
Okay, just the one meeting. Okay.
Wednesday.
Okay. All right, the November twelfth is a Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay. And then the last thing that I wanted to say is that, welcome, but the last few council meetings, I've been very confused. I learned one way from our previous city attorney, and it seems like you have a different style. And because you have a different style, I don't understand when I'm right or wrong, because I've been taught this way. So, I'm wondering if you can give me some suggestions as to how we move forward as a council with the way that you're orchestrating the meetings? Should we have another ethics training? What do we need to do? Because every council meeting is different in regards of how you lead. And I want to make sure that I understand what is right and what is wrong, because apparently, I've learned the wrong way, and so seems like you're now correcting things to make it the right way. And so, I just want to make sure that I'm doing things the right way. So, can you please?
Absolutely. I'd be very happy to do so, to provide clear direction to this council. It's all in the municipal code. Every city attorney in the state of California will use the municipal code as a basis. You guys actually have a wonderful code of decorum. It lays it out, it's very clear. Perhaps we just need to be reminded of what's already in there, and I'd be very happy to provide you a memorandum and explain specifically the issue as it relates to directives.
Yeah, I'm fully aware of the directives, but my issue again is how our previous city attorney led the meetings versus the way you're... There is a difference in the way that you lead, and so I feel that I'm used to reacting the way the previous city attorney taught me, and now you're doing something different. So, I feel confused.
Sure.
Like, do I jump in? Do I not? Like, what am I doing? Because I was doing this, this way, and now you're saying do it this way. So, I just want to be very clear, that way, I'm doing it the way that we're supposed to, but I am very aware of that. And I did take the ethics training, and it did say this, but I'm just saying, it just seems like you're doing things different.
Yeah. I'm just, again, just following the municipal code, and I don't, I'm trying very hard not to say anything about how it was done in the past, but as long as I'm acting as your interim city attorney, I will continue to follow the law.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
One go back, and hi, I'm a city clerk. Okay, go ahead.
Vaughn, I just want to make sure that you got my email to also give Pastor Greg his three fifty for his function.
Yes.
Okay.
I did receive that.
Just checking.
Yes, thank you. I received everyone's email.
Was I supposed to get three fifty?
Are we good? Okay, thank you, guys. So, it's about eight, nine o'clock. This is kind of on, I don't know if this is longer or about average for what we've used to have, but thank you, guys, all for being here. I also want to congratulate the Sentinel Valley Union High School District for their, the re-inauguration of the athletic fields at Hawthorne High School. Beautiful, they look beautiful. The surfacing on the track is definitely, you know, looking good. And I remember when I run around, in the last two or three or four years, there was just always this little patch where it was like holes in the track, and you know, if you didn't step right, you'd probably trip or hurt yourself. So, it was very, very important. Hawthorne High School and its athletic program has a long history of successes and, you know, athletes that have come out of there. A lot of baseball players that played in the major leagues, and NFL players as well, just so many names that, you know, like this was sixties, fifty, sixty, seventies era type of athletes that, you know, I personally don't remember, but the people were there were listing them like hotcakes. And Brian Wilson, who was the Beach Boys, the leader of the Beach Boys, and they're from Hawthorne, of course, used to go to Hawthorne High School there. Al Jardine, his cousin, also went there, and the two brothers, Dennis and Este, and what was the other? Carl Wilson, yeah, were also going there. So, this is a Beach Boys type of place. And one of the Beach Boys, their cousin came from Dorsey High School, so, you know, lived over there in Baldwood Hills. So, there's just a lot of history here, and there was a lot of history there. We had a lot of Olympians that came from the sprinting teams. We had like won all CIF, people that won all, groups that won all CIF, track and field events during the eighties, you know, class of eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety. So, I mean, there's just lots of the history, so I want to congratulate, it was good. I saw some of my council colleagues there, so it was good seeing you guys there. They felt, they were really, really happy that we went and supported them. They really were. So, that's a good thing. The Dodgers unfortunately lost today, but I think we're going to win it. We're going to start, we're going to be winning the next two games. I hope it doesn't go to like the last games or something like that, but I think we can do it, right? So, and because of that, we, you know, Russell Westbrook, his grandma or his mother? Surely, if we could look at Shirley Westbrook, I believe it's, it might be his grandmother who lives here in Hawthorne, over there near, near one-sixteenth in Hawthorne Boulevard. I think she might have passed away. I don't think it's his mom, so if we could take a look at that and maybe consider, and if there's no objection from council member colleagues, maybe we could just...
Councilwoman Manning previously asked me to create a proclamation, so consensus would be if you want your name on the proclamation or not?
Sorry, sorry, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, yeah, of course.
Yes.
Yeah. I think it's good, yes. The proclamation too and everything, right? Okay, good. So, we have a lot of history here in the city hall, and we have a lot of musical history. There's a lot to feel proud of. And it's funny, because Gordon was mentioning the little area over there, I guess where your mother, Mrs. Balboa, where she lived, making that like a little park. But right around the corner, down like where the parking lot that the city now owns, on Hawthorne Boulevard, that used to be Kitty Land. Do you guys remember that? Kitty Land? Where they used to have all the rides and everything? Rob, you should remember Kitty Land over there on Hawthorne Boulevard, right across the street from Pix Coffee Shop. Oh, my God, we're talking to history. So, it just reminded me of like what we used to have right there. We used to have, they used to sell little trailers right next to Kitty Land. Nobody remembers that? Oh, my God, where's all the historians here?
Oh.
I'm old, all right. Maybe I'm trying to prove, you know, I'm a real Hawthorne person, but no, it just reminded me, if he was here, he would have known. There's just a lot of wonderful history. We used to have a little amusement park there, and people just don't even remember, right? Obviously, but there's just so much to feel proud of. Hopefully, we could pull out some of those pictures. Okay, so with regards to all these things about the directives, I think I want to make a, I want to talk about that, but first, the last meeting, sure. Of course, I'm not going to be opposing, if I'm going to put, our duty is to be able to debate things up here, and to be able to go back and forth and come to conclusions, you agree, you don't. And it's okay if people don't agree with me, there's been many times that I brought things up, and hey, you guys didn't like it, that's why I bring it. That's why we're a council. We come to consensus. You helped me see something that I didn't see. Or if I'm plainly wrong, or just you didn't agree with me, I think I can walk away knowing that, you know, hey, I put my idea forth. So, I don't think it's about me, if I come up with something, it just has to be done, has to be done, because it's my idea, and nobody can oppose it. It's okay. That's why we're a council. And that's our duty, and it should continue through the whole, you know, the whole action of the whole conduct of the meeting, the whole process of the meeting. Every single thing we talk about here represents the city. It has to do with the city's money, it has to do with council being represented in any action or any proclamation or letter that we put out. So, because of that, I think it's worthy, everything has to be and is worthy of being debated. So, it just can't be a simple directive to producing things that, especially letters. When we send out a letter to oppose something, I think there's been times where people have said, I don't want to be on that letter. So, that's opposing it. I mean, the person who brought it up here, how they're going to, you know, okay, you don't want to be on the letter, that's fine. Okay? Maybe because they don't know enough of that, what's going on with regards to the, what's being proposed, maybe because, you know, they oppose it, maybe for it's a political reason, and it's fine. You don't want to put your name on something that's maybe some of one of your supporters or the specific party you belong to, and its directors might see that you oppose something that they're supporting. So, I think we all should have the right to either oppose it going out, or having our name not be included, right? I think that's our prerogative, and I think it's very important that it works that way. Actions that incur costs, hey, go do this, this, and that, there's a cost to it, that's the city's money. I don't think one person could be just directing that, and it could just go and the action be taken without healthy, even if it's a quick debate or consensus amongst council members. Okay, the majority rules up here. That's the way it should be. Also, but then there's also things like, hey, you know what? Can you, can you, can you remind me, can you send me the confidential that you had last time that was sent out? Can you look it up and send it to me? Right? I don't think that requires a consensus, because that's some information I need, or one of my council colleagues needs. But can you give me monthly reports on this, this, and that? That's critical, because that's taking away staff from doing other things that they were doing, and it's something that's going to be regular, and I think that's worthy of, I believe that it's worthy of having a decision made, even if it's a quick one, even if it's a consensus or a vote that could be established, so that we could figure that out, right? That's all it is. Proclamations too. For the most part, we all support each other on the proclamations, you know, we need to say, you know what, this, this, and that. But, you know, but if it's a very controversial group that somebody wants to make a proclamation to one of us, me or anybody here, maybe somebody doesn't want to be on that proclamation. So, we have to have an avenue on being able to decide if we're going to be on there or not. And I don't think this being silent and not saying anything should default to agreeing. I think that's incorrect. I think with the exceptions of small pieces of reports, little, for individual reports that don't take a lot of time to go pull out, that should be the only exception, and I really think that at this point, the, in the decorum or whatever, that needs to reflect, be reflected. Either a consensus vote, or a vote through the city clerk's system that she has over there. That's what I want to see. That's what I would like to see, and I think I might have some support here. Because, I mean, I don't want to refer to the last meeting, I want to let that, you know, go into past, that's, we need to move forward. We do need to move forward, but, you know, these are, directives are directives, directives are things that we, they're not orders. You know, they were being referred to as an order. That's not, I can't order you to do something, I can request for you to do something. In order, in order is you do it or else. That's, we can't have that type of feeling here with our staff. We just got to be careful with the words, you know? I mean, I want to move on from that. So, I also disagree on the decorum being rewritten to prohibit anybody from standing. I did purposely say hello, city clerk, because she came back from the outside. Yeah, she's not the one of the five of us. At the last meeting, I saw, I remember, I recall that Councilwoman Manning, Councilwoman Johnson went to the back, I went to the back. So, you know, that's, everybody can go to the back and do whatever they need. You need to use the restroom real quick, you need to get something, you feel like, whatever, you know, you feel, you want to get some, you know, right? The city treasurer used to, was going to the back as well. That should, I don't think that should be included. That's my feedback, sir. So, whether it's something that we vote on later, as though, you know...
So, just what I'm hearing is there was a directive. I believe you're making an objection, so pursuant to your municipal code, it's now subject to a vote as to whether or not we're going to carry through...
Yeah. So, we could go back to that right now? And I think, and I disagree the way that the last meeting was misrepresented with any of my actions, I have the right to be able to inform myself before I make a decision by talking to the city attorney privately as to if the, an action I'm about to take is going to put me in a situation that I'm not supposed to be. If there's a liability on us taking an action, okay, I don't want to refer to the specific details of that, because those were between attorney-client privilege. So, if we're going to take an action, is it going to hurt us? It's going to put us in a, are we violating any other person's constitutional rights, or any group's constitutional rights? It was at that level of a conversation. It was not opposing something that was brought forth, because it was brought forth because of someone. No, it's because of taking care and making sure that we're making the proper decisions. So, I'm opposing the being able to stand and talk to the city attorney, being included there. And the directives, I don't know what your recommendation, Mr. City Attorney, if we were to pose the vote? Should it be like, what would be most efficient? Just a consensus call? Hey, do we have consensus? Vote yes, or should we do something maybe through the city clerk's system that she has up here?
So, again, it is possible for the council to come up with a consensus, an agreement, something very simple as a proclamation. I heard of consensus, that was no dispute, that was easy. The code states, if there is an objection, there shall be a vote. That indicates to me that there's a council member, for the reasons you just expressed, has a different position. So, now you have to leave it up to a vote.
So, if you, so what you would rather prefer is if you sense an objection by the comments of somebody, that then that's when we call for a vote? Or would you just automatically, like what people are asking, just call for a vote every single time, something of...
You don't have to call for a vote every single time, but in this case, I think you're making an objection. And if you're making an objection, I believe you're making objection, then the code requires that you take it to a vote now.
Ready for vote? The one vote that we have to do is the directive.
But if, if the clarification, Mr. Mayor Protem, is the city attorney saying that we have enough in the decorum?
I like your decorum, your code, I think it's pretty clear, it's concise. I have no objection to it.
Then if your recommendation, if you think that that's going to help us stay out of trouble, you just, ah, you're going like that?
What he's saying is that at some point, really soon, we need to take a vote on whether or not the directives will be, if it's been contested by you, and so we need to vote on that.
No, no, this is something, this is another different aspect.
Yeah, that's one issue.
So, we have enough with what we have with regards to say, hey, voting for, on everything?
In my opinion, I think the code is well-written. In my opinion, I think the code is well written.
And you could, you could ask for clarification on your own?
Yeah, I could, again, you made a decision, there was a consensus on our proclamation, there was no doubt in my mind of the direction that the council wanted to go, so there was no need for a vote. Here in this instance, there's an objection, so now it requires a vote.
So I just, I withdraw any proposal to that, if you think you have enough there that you could work with on that issue.
Through the chair.
Unless my colleagues have anything to add on that.
I, my opinion, I believe because this has become controversial, right? And a lot of people are not misunderstanding, I think maybe every directive that we give to any staff or the city manager or the city attorney, we should vote on it. Because, so that would be clear, that would not, just don't knock your head, but it should be clear that there is a majority that is giving that directive. If somebody wants to do a directive, if it benefit to the people of Hawthorne and it's going to improve lives or do something, we should make a, make a directive, get a second on it and then we vote, up or down. Now, Mr. Mayor also is wanting us now to vote also on the rules of conduct that has already been established. Or we want amended or we do not want amended, just leave it where it is. So, so that's, is what I'm understanding, that we're going to do a vote to say amend or not amend it. But my thing that I want to put on the floor, because Councilwoman Fay Johnson said about directive should be voted on, and I'm second that because we never finish her.
In that case, you would have to amend the ordinance.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, there's two things going on and it makes sure that people understanding.
I'd like to make an interdelineation, don't freak out. So I'm willing to accept that language, but in addition, no other changes, no additional changes, is what I'm saying.
Okay, so I'm hearing that on any direction given by a council member, there has to be a vote.
Correct.
To the chair, I think we have two things that we need to vote on, what you just said and whether or not we're going to amend our decorum, our code.
Pursuant to council member raising.
Exactly. So right now, we're going to vote on whether we're voting on directives.
Voting on directives to require a vote every time.
And that's been seconded.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Please vote.
I'll have to amend the ordinance to require a vote on every directive.
The votes, the votes are in? Voting reflects Mayor, Councilwoman Fay Johnson, Mayor Protem Alex Montero voting yes, Katrina Manning and Angie Reyes, Councilwoman Katrina Manning and Angie Reyes English voting no. It passed.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to not have any further amendments to the, to the decorum.
I second it.
Please vote.
The votes are in? The voting reflects Mayor Vargas and Councilwoman Johnson voting yes.
Okay.
Mayor Protem Alex Montero abstaining and Councilwoman Angie Reyes English and Katrina Manning voting no.
I guess I'm just going to, you know, I'm not going to...
So there's no changes?
Didn't pass.
So, look, thank you everybody for being here. The Dodgers lost, as we said, hopefully, yeah, they're going to win the whole thing, watch guys. And Mr. City Attorney, so just the, I actually agree with Councilwoman Katrina Manning, I think it's good that, I want to commend you for your actions up to this point and I think it's, right, let's give him a round of... And I want to highlight, and I think there was a speaker that mentioned this, we finally have somebody that has municipal law experience in this position, although interim, you're doing a fine job and we really appreciate it and I think that's kind of comfort too because we know you're not just coming in, not, you know, you already have your feet wet. I mean, you're soaked with information, so I appreciate it. Please continue serving the whole of the council equally, you build a relationship with everybody here equally and that's, that's all I could ask for, okay? And serve the community well. Thank you, sir. Let's give him a round of applause.
Yeah. I, I just want to comment that I appreciate when you correct me. If I'm doing something wrong, I want you to tell me I'm doing it wrong. I don't want you to sit there and let me make a fool of myself. I believe iron sharpens iron and we all will be better if we have that good debate, if we have a back and forth conversation that we're not, I personally don't want a yes man or a yes woman, I want somebody to challenge me. So I appreciate that, it's refreshing, I like it, thank you.
And, and what's really nice is that we spent the time to discuss the things we were talking about, everybody ended up discussing things and we went back and forth. There's going to be times where we're all 100% in agreement on something, it's going to be, then there's other times where it's going to be a mix, so, you know, not all my ideas are, you know, voted on and accepted, so, you know, I just think it's just part of it. But I also want to make, I want to mention that we have a list of food pantries that are available and do you, can you talk about it real quick? I'll let you do it.
So here's a list of, I know that I've gotten some calls about the EBT program ending and so we have a list of a lot of the food banks and I want the young people to know too that I'll help support them in any way I can with respect to their food drive, including helping them with my contacts with the American Heart Association get food if they need it, if the American Heart Association is still giving out food at this point. But that list there is pretty comprehensive and it's all the churches and all the places in the area here that are giving out food and on the different days. And from what I hear that, you know, pretty much any day of the week, you can go out and get food if you need it.
Can we put on a website?
I don't know about the website, but I have the list out there because it's pretty big, it's a pretty big list. And they can also come to the city clerk's office and some people do and get the list.
Thank you, thank you everybody for, for being here and we're going to close this meeting out in honor of Shirley Westbrook, relative of Russell Westbrook, so may she rest in peace. So let's have a moment of silence for her. All right, thank you all for being here. Meeting's adjourned at 9:16.